Good evening, I'll call this meeting to order. If you would kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Here.
Carmandy?
Yeah, here.
Fishbein?
Here.
Laffin?
Here.
Regan?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Alright, um, moving on to the consent agenda.
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3H and 3J through 3N.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion is unanimous. Moving on to item four, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. Item number five, public question and answer. Does anyone have a question for the council, sir?
Hi, good evening, Daryl Stancuna, 18 Old Village Condominium Association. I'd like to file ethics charges against the town clerk Panzo and register Wolfer due to violating Daryl Stancuna's First Amendment rights. Register Wolfer had voted at the Democratic Town Committee, quote-unquote "no" for Daryl Stancuna to run his Democrat Town Council. Mister Wolfer violated general statutes 9-4531 by deliberately not submitting the certified nomination petition to town clerk Panzo by August 22nd, 2023. The Connecticut State Elections Enforcement Commission fined the town for how much money?
If I may, Mister Chairman?
Please, Mayor.
It was fifty dollars.
Also, what kind of reprimanded town clerk Panzo and register Wolfer get for these Connecticut laws broken?
So Wolfer would be an elected official, so he's beyond our reach of discipline. Uh, and then what a town civil servant would receive for a discipline wouldn't be a matter of public record.
It is a matter of public record?
It is not a matter of public record.
I'm not sure if that's true, but we'll have to, uh, ask the mayor, is this true? That's not a public record?
Uh, Mister Stancuna, that's my representation.
Okay, I believe you do have a right.
So you opened your statement by indicating you want to make ethics charges. So the council has no hand in ethics charge, but there is an Ethics Commission that I'd be happy to put you in touch with if you want to pursue, you know, your complaint with the Ethics Commission.
Okay, but for this other situation, you guys filed, uh, ethic charges against Jason Zandry and believe it's in the best interests of the public's sake that you guys do the same on this matter.
Okay, so when you say "you guys" though, it wasn't, the council did not take action against Jason Zandry. That was an individual that filed an ethics complaint against Mister Zandry, and you could certainly pursue your own ethics complaint against, you know, whomever you think, um...
Who was that person though, a town councillor Fishbein? Next to you?
When you say, right, but your representation was that "you guys", so it wasn't "you guys", it was an individual that pursued it.
Right, but it was a town council against the town council, so it's the council, right?
No, it's not.
Okay. Well, anyway, you guys have that duty and obligation for the public to do the same for my rights, my First Amendment rights being violated. This is an ethics violation. Jason Zandry was a voted position. All of you up there are voted positions. Mister Wolfer's a voted position. So I'd like you to, uh, follow through with the ethics charges against Mister Wolfer. We cannot have some people that are dishonest inside our town hall. They can't be trusted. We need something done about this. Um, how are we supposed to have trust in the public? This isn't something I did. This is something from the State Enforcement Elections Commission. They did a year and a half investigation, their respondents. You guys had respondents. This is the process Connecticut came on you guys. So, I'd like something done about this. And, um, as far as, I would like to offer, like a Stancuna rule. The town council should be notified when employees are found to have violated laws. Policy has to change, so first time council learns about it, let the public know. Nobody knew, I emailed all of you guys back. One person, thank you Christine Tada for mailing me back. Nobody else emailed me back. So, thank you Christine Tada. No one else does that, you guys are elected by us. Whether you like someone or not, you should return an email. That's very rude. It's not like I sent you an inappropriate email or something. It's unprofessional, and that's where we have to stop this in this town. We have a city hall with two people that are not honest. Whether you like me, whether I like you, we have laws to follow. If Wallingford is promoting discrimination, prejudice, hate, let me know. I mean, is this something I'm missing? Is this a certain clique or something, and everything's a joke? It's not right, people have disabilities. Maybe some people don't. Doesn't matter, you just treat people, I've never disrespected anybody. I don't owe anybody money, I've never told off anybody. I've always had a calm demeanor. Whether I like someone or not, you can even ask Mister Farrell over here on my left. I see him in public, I've seen you running, I'm always polite to everybody. I'd like the same thing done for me, whether you like me or not. I didn't do anything to Mister Wolfer. I didn't do anything to Mrs. Panzo. And I'd like something done about this.
So, to be clear though, I, because I read the report that you, and you, um, just for the record, so you didn't email me, you emailed a selection of councilors, then the clerk was kind enough to forward your email to me. So I did read the paperwork you sent us. Uh, there was, they found that there was a violation. Uh, paperwork was filed late related to your last political campaign. The state assessed a fine. So I think the matter's resolved at this point.
No, no it's not.
But I agree that we should always move in the, sort of the direction of respect, and so I appreciate you bringing that up. So I, I hope you don't feel disrespected by my non-return. I didn't anticipate that you were looking for a response. Uh, but as far as I'm concerned, the matter is concluded. As far as the, I think the punishment fit the, the offense, and I think the matter's concluded at this point.
What's the punishment though? You're not telling me what the punishment was.
Well, they assessed a fine, and the fine was paid.
No, but what happened to the employees? This is a dishonest, this has nothing to do with election. This has to do with above the law. We pay as taxpayers, these people positions, to be honest. They were caught by the state of Connecticut, not by me. Denise Knappier had to tell you all that I was going to be on the ballot. You guys did not submit it, you didn't want me on the ballot, you told everyone I'm not going to be running. Denise Knappier had to change all that, and this Connecticut Enforcement Elections found this, not me.
Understood, but your name was on the ballot, correct?
Doesn't matter. My name got on the ballot because I had to call, uh, the Secretary of State, not because of you, not because of Mister Wolfer, not because of Mrs. Panzo, not because of the duties of this town. That's not why I got on the ballot. I got on the ballot because I wasn't notified and everybody was saying I wasn't going to be on the ballot here.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
I had to call Denise Knappier, and I was only on specially because it wasn't my fault, but it was the town of Wallingford's fault.
I appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
And then, last but not least, I mean, I still want to find out about the discipline, and I want to pursue the ethics charges. So, I'm going to continue with that. So I want, you know, something done about that. Let me know what, who we need to talk to to file this, because that's, it's not over. I'm the one that got, uh, violated, okay? Maybe it's over for you, it ain't over for me. And one last thing. Uh, I know tonight we're here for the Board of Education with the two schools. But I gotta tell you something. We really did this to ourselves in this town. Uh, as far as the one school, it's a great idea now, since we've been letting students play football for Sheehan that don't even live on that side of town, to keep Sheehan the dominant football team over Lyman Hall to keep losing terribly every year. Um, so to continue that unfairness of the kid that should be playing for the team in their backyard, that should have never been going on. If you live in the district of Lyman Hall, you play for Lyman Hall football. Not, okay, they, they're not a good team, I'm going to go to Sheehan and play for them because they're a better team. That's where we went wrong in this town. So, now we're going to one building for the kids, for one school? Guess what? It puts it in a correction that we'll have the best football team, one football team. But, that was terrible with the division.
Uh, thank you, anyone else? Sir?
Paul Chardillo, Toobey Berry Drive. Good evening, Mister Chairman.
Good evening.
Uh, last year at the, uh, public hearing, the budget public hearing, I attended, and I tried to make the case that we should cancel the, uh, tax increase that was being proposed. I presented what I thought was rational data. Of course, that didn't happen. And I did the same thing two years ago. This year, what I've decided to do is to come forth before the budget is submitted. Uh, and that's why I'm here tonight. So I'll, I'll start by saying that the 2024 budget, which just ended in June of this year, we're in the '25 budget. The June budget ended in, uh, ended the '24 year. According to the, uh, expense reports that come out of the, uh, the town, the June report, which was the year-ending report, it showed that our expenses came in at, uh, 3.565 million under budget. It also showed that our revenue, the budget was 186 million. Our revenue came in at 194, 194.5 million. That's, that was the end of the, the year, year-ending June. So we returned to the, uh, surplus. 11,286,725 dollars. Which is a pretty large number. We had a tax increase of 2.86% that year. If these numbers are correct, and I, I believe they are, somebody can challenge them, there was no need for a tax increase. I, I think that's very important. The other point I'll make is that that performance is reflected in the budget that we're in now. So, I think we're going to continue to see underperformance uh, on expenses, less expenses, more revenue, and maybe unnecessary tax increases. So, I guess I wanted to ask anybody. Can anybody explain how that happened? How, how is it that the council can approve such a large error in the budget?
So, I think relying on the June final fiscal report is the wrong way to look at the budget. So the fiscal year's over, correct? So when we get the CAFR, uh, or the, our annual audit, we'll know exactly what the surplus or deficit was in the budget. So I use the financial reports to sort of guide me on where the departments are month to month, but I don't use it for an accounting of the final end of the year because there's adjustments made to the budget throughout this process and after the end of the fiscal year for expenses incurred and so on. So I, I'll wait for the CAFR to determine what the actual, you know, status of the town is. And then if we need to take a different approach to next year's budget, we certainly can.
Okay. Well, let me comment on that. Um, the audit report is not a good report, in my opinion, and somebody can correct me if they feel I'm wrong, to determine performance to budget. The reason is that the audit report on the budget portion, first of all, it's a 150-page report. It's easy to get lost in there because it covers everything. But if you focus on the budget piece, it uses non-GAAP accounting. So we add stuff, we take stuff out. Very difficult to figure out what the performance actually is. That's why I go back to the actual expense report or the performance report that the town produces. It's my opinion. Again, I'm looking for input, if anybody wants to question that, I'm open to it. Um, any other comments? How could we make such a huge mistake? We, by the way, we do this every year. I, I've been a broken record, I know. And, um, so I'd like to, I'd like perspective on it. You guys think I'm a bunch of baloney? Tell me. Why, how can we make such large errors?
Well, you...
I have an opinion.
Just so we're clear, you can't poll the council on this topic.
Pardon?
You can't poll the council on this topic, but you're going to ask me a question.
Alright.
So, if, my opinion is, and I think we've said this at budget meetings many years, is that we sort of tend to overestimate, um, expenses and underestimate revenues, year after year. But however, we have a new mayor. So last year's budget was a minor departure, this year's budget, uh, you know, I'm going to wait and see what the budget's going to look like.
Okay.
Because it's, it, potentially a new system.
I hear you. Let me, just a couple of observations. My opinion. I believe that the, well, first of all, I think that we have evolved over a 40-year period under the previous mayor. I understand we have a new mayor, and perhaps things will change. I think they should. But we've evolved this process over a 40-year period, and there are numerous, a number of things, I pointed them out over the years in that budget, that if we changed them instantly, you would, you would save dollars that we don't need to put in there. Again, my opinion, I'm willing to talk to anybody about it. Bottom line is, I don't believe that the council is scrutinizing this budget, any budget, well enough. And toward that end, I, I did send an email to all of you, I hope you all saw it, where I made a recommendation. And my recommendation was to place performance review once a month. Put it on the council agenda. Let the public come in, look at it, it could be five minutes, it may take five hours. But, you're reviewing the performance, you're giving the public an opportunity to question certain things. And I think that is going to be an educational process for everybody. And if you do that every month, over time, maybe you change it to once a quarter. But you should review it publicly and regularly. I think we'll all become more educated on the nuts and bolts of the budget. And we'll be able to make a higher-quality decision at the beginning of the year when a proposal comes forward. Uh, I have some very specific ideas about problems in the budget. I will communicate them to you. And hopefully you can give me some feedback on that, but can you comment on the standing agenda item? How does that go? You, I asked you about it, and apparently you're not supportive of it, but...
Correct. Yeah, so, again, I'm one of nine, right? So anyone here could put it on the agenda if they so chose. But I'm not a fan of that, of that idea. But I'm happy to talk to you about the budget.
Yeah.
You know, you and I have talked about it before.
I'd like to ask the councilors to give consideration to putting it on the budget, or, I'm sorry, putting it on your agenda, your next agenda. And let's have a full-throated discussion about it, and then vote on it. If you don't want to do it, great, don't do it. I think it would be a mistake because I think it would be a very good thing. We have a tendency to approve the budget, it goes in the desk drawer, nobody ever looks at it again. That's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we have just a couple of minutes, anyone else? Sir?
Uh, good evening, Jason Michael Meadow Street. Uh, just a few quick things, I'll keep them quick. Um, so, on the same vein of a broken record, which I don't think you're broken, I think you're just on repeat. Um, I came in here, turned my phone on, was hoping to see that little, join our wifi. I asked a year ago. I had patience, it's a year. Are we ever going to get wifi in this room?
Yes.
We are?
We are.
It's, it's in, it's in the works? The machine's moving?
The machine is moving, so, um, it's, uh, there's a lot of changes coming to Town Hall, quite frankly, and that's among them. But, you know, there's a, a lot of, uh, underpinnings to the technology uh, that are being worked on now.
As long as it's actually moving, that's, that's great.
It's definitely on the radar.
Okay, um, and so, on to another, another subject, it's, um, I saw today on Facebook that there was a, a, kind of a video of the new police station, and, uh, there were comments made about it being several hundred thousand dollars under budget. Um, do we know what the final number was? The cost? Because if we know we're several hundred thousand dollars under budget, then we know what the final cost was, I imagine.
Mister Chairman, if I may?
Please, please.
There are still, um, bills being reconciled, uh, and stuff being finalized. But we should know soon.
So do we, do we have like a roundabout? Is it mid-30s, did it get near 40? Million?
No, it's well within what the council budgeted when we bonded for the, the project.
So that, that was like 34 million, somewhere around there? Because I, I'm just asking, because I, I looked back and did some homework, and the project was pitched years ago, when the property was found for like 18 million dollars. And then 21 soft costs, and years later, we landed at what we did. I, I just, just, you know, for factual sake, I'm, I'm just rounding numbers around. But, at 34 million, and we're going to do an end zone dance, being a few hundred thousand underneath, I'm just hopeful next time I come back, or as soon as they're available, that we put out publicly the final number. Because we've taken our shoes off and put our keys on the table, and we've moved in. So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll have that soon. And very quickly, the last thing was, um, kind of along the same, the same lines. Uh, I, I've asked in the past what exactly the, the Public Works bill to the taxpayer is to pick up Christmas trees. I've asked multiple years. I kind of get the same answer. We don't know.
So, well, it's not that we don't know, so I spoke to Rob Baltimore...
Well, that's, that's the answer I get.
Yeah, I spoke to Rob Baltimore about it, so the, um, it's not something, you know, we don't go out to a contractor for it, so it's our crews doing it on regular company time, so...
Right.
Uh, so it's just a matter of accumulating the hours. So he had said he would put together some numbers as best he can and present them, you know, to you at a later time.
Oh, great, alright, well, thank you.
No trouble at all. Sir?
Bill Commerford, Broadway Drive, I'll make this quick. Um, first off, in, in response to, um, the last gentleman that just spoke, it was, it was one year that he brought it up. Just for the record, it's a one-year anniversary right now for Hidden Brook Pond. One year. It's been on the agenda every single meeting. And it's been one year. Nothing's changed. Nothing, okay? So happy birthday, Hidden Brook Pond, or Road, whatever it's called. Um, a grant was applied for, for the historic railroad station. Mayor, do you know what the update is with that?
You know the answer to that question.
They, they don't, I'm just asking you if you, what the answer is.
You can give them the answer, you have the information.
I just obtained the information a couple hours ago. Um, I called, called, no answer, so I drove over here, picked it up. Um, it was rejected, this is the third time that the town applied for three separate grants, and it got rejected, this is the third time it got rejected. And part of it says, "Lack of explanation as to cause a water intrusion." Intrusion. "Questions regarding phasing of the project and decision to repair roof last, and encourage to do more water analysis." Okay, I think this is going to kind of play into later on's discussion about the report, the assessment of the buildings and so forth. So, and I know everybody used up the time, but is the public going to be able to ask questions, or it just gets going to be a, a discussion between the town council and whoever talks about the item, about the, uh, the report? So we could be able to ask some questions about that? Because the way it's written...
It's a regular agenda item, so you'll be able to ask questions.
Thanks so much, thank you.
Certainly. Alright, I'll close the public question and answer, uh, as we're over time. Um, moving on to old business. Um, Mister Farrell, do you have an update on Hidden Brook Lane?
Attorney Small says that indications are that the developer is hiring a new attorney. If that doesn't happen and it can't be resolved, she is going to bring suit.
Okay. Okay, well, that's, that's news. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six. Uh, updating discussion on the A Community Pool bid and B the Town Building Maintenance Assessment. Uh, councillor Reynolds, this is your item.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, for clarity, when we discussed this, it was possible that we could have put this under old business, so there's, you know, the agenda item's kind of a combo. Um, I just was, I, I've been asked on a number of occasions, uh, by people, uh, both, you know, by email as well as, you know, in public about, uh, where we are with the pool. So I was just taking the opportunity to ask where we are with the pool.
We are still waiting for the architect, uh, to return the plans after code review. So, uh, as of the end of last week, we haven't gotten them back from the architect yet.
Do we have like a...
My hope is any day now.
Okay.
Do you want to go on to the next one?
Yeah, no, I was just writing that down, sorry.
Okay, no, no worries.
Yeah, and then I guess the second part was, uh, I was wondering if I could get an update on the, uh, uh, on the report about the municipal buildings.
Good evening. Uh, Rob, I don't know if your microphone's on. Oh, there you go, okay.
Let me start over, I apologize, there was a light on, but my mic was not on. So, again, good evening, Mister Chairman, councilors for your record, Rob Baltimore is Public Works Director. So, um, where we're at with, um, this assessment project, um, let me start back, we went out to RFP. There was a purchase order issued around June or July, obviously of last year. Um, we, we retained a firm, um, a national firm, architecture, engineering, environmental, um, national presence. All they do is facility condition assessments and capital planning. Um, they ranked very highly technical as part of that RFP. Again, they were retaining the purchase issue, purchase order issued, um, June or July. Um, the assessments began in the fall, September and October. Draft reports started coming in, October, November. The last report for the Armory, former PD building, just came in, uh, that assessment, that walkthrough was done in December. That assessment came in last week, first week of January. So we finally have them all in hand. We did in the RFP, asked for draft reports, so we could review them. Um,
Um, at this point, I am looking to quickly get them finalized for the simple reason that these reports are gonna be very helpful for me to plan my budget, both for the immediate fiscal year coming up, twenty-five, twenty-six, but also to develop a short, three to five-year and long-term, ten to twenty-year capital plan for these seven buildings that, that Public Works maintains. Um, so it is ongoing. Um, I don't have a lot of detail on the buildings. I could tell you, I've done cursory views of the reports. I'm not surprised by anything in there. I think we all know what some of the shortcomings are in, in our buildings. Um, I don't have to remind you, but I'm going to. A railroad building built in eighteen seventy-three. A scowl building, former electric division built in eighteen ninety-nine, a town hall from nineteen sixteen and an armory from nineteen twenty. We don't have a lot of surprises in here. Um, but what we will have as, as a result of this is a roadmap going forward on how we best plan capital money, whether it's coming directly from taxes or as I've talked to the mayor about, let's get ready to bond some capital improvements in these buildings. Um, and that's an update. But uh, certainly going into my budget preparation cycle, which is January and in full swing by February, I want those reports finalized.
Perfect. Uh, follow questions?
I, just one, and thank you very much. Um, as part of the RFP, uh, did any, is there ever any recommendation as to whether or not it's worthwhile to maintain and use the building further or to move out of it?
Oh, so I think that would be a different kind of um, consultant report, if you will, councillor Reynolds. So what we ask for specifically is for uh, facility condition assessment. So for them to come in um, and compile the general assets. Um, and it's actually, it's, it's, it's very interesting. You take the park and rec building with some twenty-four rooftop units. They go and look at all of them, they look for tags and then they tell us, hey, th- this one's from nineteen eighty-six, get ready. Or this one got replaced in twenty seventeen, it's newer. Um, they look at interior finishes, they look at the window systems, the roofing, plumbing, electrical, lot of good information. It's, it's still a high-level r- review. Um, we don't get into destructive testing, we're not breaking walls apart to see what's in there. Um, you know, but again, I think this gives us a good roadmap going forward. And, and it's not to say, okay, once, once I lay out and, and I go to the mayor and to this council and say, here's, here's the funding plan. It's not that other things won't come up. It's, it's not all-inclusive, it's not gonna catch everything, but again, it's a good roadmap. But I apologize, I'm getting off track because I think to, to your question, that sounds more of like a um, a facility, like a needs, a space needs assessment. That's not what this was.
All right, other questions from the council? Mr. Carmody?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was just curious about the process. So after your review, what happens next?
Well, they would get my, my comments and any markups and um, I, I think, I think they'll be minor, in, in all honesty. These aren't wholesale changes that I would be looking for. It's gonna be, it's gonna be grammatical things, it's gonna be factual things like, no, the building wasn't built in nineteen thirty-three, it was nineteen sixteen. Let's just get the report correct. Um, I will tell you, my biggest issue and, and what I think is, is going to take the longest is the cost assessments. I wanna get those correct because, you know, again, they're, they're a national firm, they have databases. Um, a- and they can, they could tell you that an HVAC unit, they might say it's fifteen thousand dollars. Well, I wanna make sure that in Wallingford in twenty twenty-five, at our pricing, that these, uh, you know, the, the costs that they're suggesting to us are, are accurate.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Members of the public? Mr. Carmody?
Bill Cumberford, Broadview Drive. Is there a reason why the town, the town council, cause I brought this up before, when you started getting these reports, these draft reports in? Are they gonna get them also so they can compare the actual draft report versus the finalized report? No, fair enough question. So um, when the reports are finalized, I think anybody who wants the draft or, or even my written comments, communications back and forth with um, with the consultant, that, that's all discoverable and I would share it. So, so the answer is yes, we can get them? Yes. Okay. Um, a- 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 as far as doing a deeper dive into the building is, is, obviously you said you didn't read through it, but it might be something that they suggested or possibly, right? I, I think you're, I think you're exactly right. In fact, you know, again, my cursory view of two buildings in particular, the, the historic railroad building and the scowl building. Um, and not surprisingly, given their age, um, the basement walls, because they're masonry walls, they, they weep. Um, they take in water. I, I have a home in Wallingford built in eighteen eighty, same thing, the, the basement weep. So they, they are recommending um, further studies to be done with that. Um, it's also something that they're recommending be waterproof, sealed from the outside. Um, a- and as an example, like I was just saying, I thought the budget number that they offered for those were on the low side. Something I wanna look into and make sure we budget correctly for. No, and I, and I appreciate that. Um, without, without doing any kind of structural testing, they, they clearly wouldn't have any idea. And then I'm, I'm assuming once you start doing a deeper dive, maybe it's something that comes down the road that we look at. One of the, now that you're here, and I appreciate it, there's a hole in the back of the building here. Do you have an idea with that, why that's there? No, um, I don't know, yeah, I, I, I probably need more information on, on where it is or, or what it is. Yeah, because you, you guys just paid money to get some brickwork done, it was all done. And now there's a hole about the size of a football. And then when you come inside, you can see the, the ceiling tiles are all discolored. I was just curious what it was, number one, and number two, it's been a cold spell. My house is all granite, so I'm very familiar with stone, how it weeps and, you know, drafts and how much it retains the heat or uh, uh, it goes the opposite way and it, and it cools it. Um, because I would think that with the, how cold it was and if there was any exterior pipe that's close by, there's a strong likelihood that it might freeze. So I didn't know if that was potentially a problem, that was a problem with the cause. I was just dumbfounded, wondering why that thing was, was, was em- uh, exposed. So we're, we're gonna be able to get a copy of this stuff. Could I, um, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just be, cause I wanna make sure it's addressed. Um, and you know, I always, I'll take your calls, um, you know, answer you in any way. If you reach out to me and just let me know exactly where that is. When you leave here, you'll see, you'll see it, it's right in the back. Second floor? Uh, first floor. First floor a- at the end of the hallway. If, if it's obvious, I'll, I'll find it tonight or tomorrow morning. Okay. Thank you. Um, and, and my only, my final statement, my final question is, wouldn't it be advantageous to get all these numbers sooner rather than later? Like Mr. Chardello was saying, and I understand he just got the stuff, but get some numbers because you're approaching budget season. And if there's major work that's gotta get done, I would imagine that it might be brought out or uh, the, the concern with lead, paint, asbestos and, and things like that. Obviously, we have to bite the bullet at some point, but as a taxpayer, I'd rather know. Whether it be the pool, the buildings or the two schools versus one. Uh, any and all information, I think, is, is better than, than having known. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Cumber.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? All right, back to the council. All right, there's no action. Thank you very much, Mr. Boltramitis.
Thank you, councillors, have a great evening.
Item number seven, uh, so this is discussion of the fire department RFP study. Good evening, Chief. Uh, thank you very much. So on this item, I, I'd like to make a motion uh, that the council approve and fund the fire department RFP study to the, uh, to the winning bidder uh, out of uh, remaining ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion on the, or any discussion on the motion from the council? Mr. Fishmine?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, we, we met here a couple weeks, well, maybe a week ago. And um, reviewed the two bids on various grounds. Um, and, and I do admit um, and agree that the bidder that's before us now was slightly uh, graded higher by this body. Um, but that night, I, I did express, and just for the record, you know, here tonight, um, I, I'm concerned about the final product. Um, you know, the, the bidder that's before us appears to operate in this space. Um, you have a lot of people that work for them. Um, they've done other studies like this. The other entity um, is smaller, more of a boutique operation. Um, you know, when we have a independent study, I would hope that the final work product is based upon us and not necessarily a conglomeration of other work that was done. You know, not looking to, I'm hoping that whatever product comes out of this is unique. Um, but one of my concerns and, and a major concern is that when we entered into this, I had envisioned the report getting done and then some sort of presentation, like we're gonna see tonight later on. Uh, where, you know, this body has a, uh, opportunity to ask questions and uh, perhaps, you know, send the consultant out with other questions and things like that. But what we're left with, what's been presented to us in this package, doesn't include anything like that. And I'm concerned that at the end of the day, we end up with a report that just ends up in a file cabinet somewhere. And I think, you know, Chief Buck here now, I, I don't think that necessarily that's gonna happen, but this is a very important thing. And it's, I think it's important for the, you know, the townspeople to, to see the result. Um, and perhaps for them to, to comment um, with the consultant here. The other bidder did contemplate that in their package. Um, and I did, I do feel, while the scoring was relatively close on the, the various, the components, the money definitely shifted it um, to one of the two bidders, the bidder that's before us here, here tonight. Um, I think the deviation was about forty thousand dollars, which is really not a lot of money considering all the money that we do spend on fire, which is well-spent money. But this is an important study. So I do anticipate voting against what's before us here tonight. Um, if at all, to flag it. And um, as I would like to see that presentation at the end. Um, I know we do have the ability to bring both of the bidders in, to ask them questions about their bid package. Um, perhaps that would ferret out some of my concerns. But I just wanted that stated for the record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Uh, councillor Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, are we allowed to, I mean, it's a public document, correct? So we're allowed to say who we're considering?
Correct.
Just, okay, so for the benefit of the public, I just wanted to say, um, there were two bidders. Um, Municipal Resources Inc. out of Plymouth, New Hampshire is who uh, the motion was made to accept. Um, they did score higher out of the two on the pricing and the technical score as scored by the council. Um, the other bidder was Center for Governmental Research out of Rochester, New York. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the public? All right, um, seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you kindly call?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, please.
Before you take a vote, um, so you're, as I understood, your motion is to take the funds from ARPA.
Correct.
And there, since the motion that the council made in December, there is no ARPA line fund.
Oh, all right, you know, cause I, I tried to reach um, Mr. Senna, who's been out of the office for a few days. So if you have a recommendation, so I know there's ARPA money coming back to us. And I know there's remaining ARPA money that wasn't spent, so I'm not sure where that money is currently held.
Yeah, so it, it's in the general fund. Um, and, and I'm not saying you can't have access to it, but because of our accounting procedures, if, if you look at your agenda, all the items, the financial items that were approved on the agenda, there's an identified account line, where it comes from, where it goes to, there's a certification by the comptroller that the funds are available. Um, and I would just, I would urge you to consider passing half of your motion or the bid. Um, and then we'll properly fund it uh, at your next meeting, just so that, that we, we create the appropriate accounting trail um, for the allocation of the funds.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. Would it make sense to take the money out of contingency and then we can refund, adjust the contingency fund later on?
That's a possibility.
I, I mean, is that a um, that, let's just complete this item today potentially and award the bid and get them working? I guess two weeks sooner, which I, is not a, a huge.
I, I wish the comptroller were here to address that. You know, typically, like I said, if you look at all of your agenda items where you've made financial allocations, you've accepted, you've appropriated, you've got an account from which it's coming and an account to which it's going. Um, and, and that's how we track all of our finances here. And there's also a certification by the comptroller that the funds are available.
Okay, no, that, that's fair. Um, a- and he should really weigh in on this as well. So uh, so then I'll modify my motion to approve the bid and then we'll have this on the next agenda for a funding source.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Uh, so any discussion on the motion is modified? All right. Anyone from the public? Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
Allison?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishmine?
No.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
I vote yes, and the motion passes. Uh, thank you very much, Chief. All right, moving on to item eight. Uh, presentation of the draft educational specs prepared by Collier and SLAM. Good evening. If you could just introduce yourselves for the record.
Yeah, good evening. Chuck Warrington, uh, Director of Project Management with Collier's Project Leaders. Nice to meet you all.
Good evening, everyone. Danielle Belizzi, Superintendent for Schools here in Wallingford.
Good evening. Dominic Barone, Business Manager for the Board of Ed.
Thank you very much. Uh, as this is councillor Carmody's item, I'll allow him to, to comment first and then we can move on to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. uh, Mr. Chairman, and good evening. Um, I had a couple thoughts that I just wanted to share before we got started. Um, as we are all aware, uh, the Board of Education recently received a draft educational specifications prepared by their consultants regarding the one high school project. Uh, this has been described as the most significant development in this project in over a year. And, and I think it marks an important moment in our town's journey uh, towards addressing this issue. Uh, currently, this draft is in the comment phase. So given the importance of this project and the potential for community feedback, to shape its future, I felt this was an opportune time for the town council to engage with the Board of Education. It's also another opportunity for members of our community to learn more about the project, to ask questions and offer their perspectives. There can never be too much community engagement. Sharing information repeatedly and openly is not only wise, but necessary for the success of this project. Providing the public with numerous opportunities to speak, question and receive answers is the hallmark of good local governance. Uh, this is why I requested this update tonight. And thank you, Superintendent Belizzi, uh, and all of you in the Board of Education for being here and for your continued efforts. One thing that I think we can all certainly agree on is that our schools are not just merely aging. Uh, in many cases, they are falling apart. Addressing this problem should be everyone's top priority. As uh, I think Principal Corso so aptly uh, put it at, at your last board meeting, this project has the potential to be transformative. And I agree. This could be transformative for our students, our teachers and the future of education in our community. Yet despite the progress, many questions remain unanswered and people continue to have concerns. And I understand the careful, methodical approach you are taking through this complex process. But I also understand the frustration I hear from residents. Two years after the board's vote on high school consolidation and seven years since this conversation began, patience is wearing thin. This meeting uh, is therefore more than an update. It is an opportunity to inform the public, to engage openly and foster collaboration between the Board of Education and the town council. Uh, and, and to that point, I wanna note that I, I requested this agenda item uh, before the board's recent meeting. And I was encouraged by Chairwoman Roscoe's thoughtful proposal for increased collaboration. I was also pleased to see that many members of the board support that initiative. And I look forward to further discussion on that tonight. Uh, but this is perhaps the most consequential decision our town will make in a generation. For it to succeed, we need broad community buy-in. And we can only achieve that uh, by aiming what I will call uh, over-engagement. Until every corner of this town feels heard and informed, our work is not done. And we are not there yet, but I'm hopeful that by working together, we will get there. And I think tonight's a good step in that direction. So again, thank you uh, for being here tonight. And uh, I look forward to your presentation. And I hand it over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, before I get started, I am hopeful that we can collaborate together. Um, myself and the Board of Education and all of you for this project. I do agree, it is a very important um, milestone that we're looking at here. And I think it's something that um, we welcome feedback for. So this evening, um, unfortunately, SLAM could not be with us, they have prior engagement. Um, so they could not be here. So tonight, what we wanted to do was provide just a high-level overview of the um, draft educational specs or ed specs. Um, we're also gonna give you a timeline as to, uh, it's a very tentative timeline, it's very fluid, uh, as are the draft educational specifications of just what we're looking at right now for the project. And then have an opportunity for all of you to ask us some questions. Uh, and hopefully, we can provide you with all the answers. Um, so what we're gonna share with all of you is just a high level. What I gave all of you is copies of um, the draft educational specifications that was given to us and shared with everyone, and it's on the district website from our December Board of Education meeting. I also gave you a copy of the presentation that SLAM put on for us and facilitated that evening. Uh, and I also gave you a copy of this presentation so that you have that as well. Just to give you a brief overview as to what we've done thus far. So as councillor Carmody mentioned, uh, January of twenty twenty-three, the Board of Education did vote for one consolidated high school. They did not select a location, they just selected one or voted for one consolidated high school. After that process, we then engaged with Colliers and we did it for two reasons. One, to come and create a ten-year capital improvement plan, which we did complete in December. And I bring to you um, frequently and it's updated consistently. Uh, and the second part- Uh, and the second part was the educational specifications. So we started that with them, February of 2024. And so that consisted of meetings with both high school principals and administration, uh, high school staff. It went down to departments. We used our, uh, curriculum coordinators or special education coordinators to gather information as to what the needs were for our programming going forward. That work was then, uh, presented and put together in the presentation for the December 16th Board of Education meeting. And so one of those things that we also look at is our enrollment, and so that is also a piece of it. Um, we had numerous meetings with our consultants, both Colliers. And then, uh, Colliers had, uh, contracted out through SLAM to do the ed specs. And so to give you all just an overview, and it's also in the larger document, which is the draft ed specs, what is educational specifications? So just to give everyone, uh, a background, I know it's probably kind of hard to read on the slide. Basically, um, this is the crux of the general purpose, the goal of what we're doing with the high school project. It involves the enrollment projections. It involves the educational programming and activities that we're looking at, that we've gathered all that feedback for months. Biweekly, we met, I think it was 19 meetings in all, two hours of time, gathering all of the information as to what is needed for the programming for the school, for what's the vision of the district, what's the programming. On top of that, we met and talked about what are the spaces that are required for best teaching for our students? What is it going to look like in terms of classrooms and labs and the administrative areas? And so all of that gets put together along with our enrollment to create a draft educational specs. The educational specs are extremely important for a multitude of reasons. Not only does it provide for the programming for the district and fulfill our vision for our students, it also looks at the building as a whole. And it gives us a framework of how big that building is going to be based on all of those factors so that then we can come to a financial, uh, understanding. And that's where Colliers comes in to help us with what's the overall cost. Um, and so to your point earlier, councillor Carmody about collaborating together, once we get to that point and these draft educational specs are eventually approved by the Board of Education, we will need to continue to collaborate, both the Board of Education and the town council, in terms of the financial aspect of this. Because as we all know, a big piece of the project, not only the ed specs, which have to be approved by the Board of Education, it's considered part of the grant. Uh, it has to be included in the grant, the Board of Education's approval. Also, the financial component is the other piece of that grant. And so we know that all comes from all of you. So for us, it's definitely that collaborative focus as well. And so in essence, this is really what's driving our project right now. It's draft version, it's going to go through lots of versions before it's finalized. We did ask for feedback from the Board of Education, from all of you, from our families, from our staff. And at the January 27th board meeting, we're going to start to share that publicly, answer that. And then that will be upon the board to go back and review and change, if needed, the draft educational specs until we get to a point where we feel like it's ready to be approved potentially by the Board of Education. I'm going to turn this part over to Mr. Warrington.
Yes, thank you. And just to kind of opine on the ed specs, um, I, I think we all understand this is a large project. We're, we're looking at over 300,000 square feet. It's going to be the largest investment you probably make in, in your community for the next probably 50 years. And this is what we're talking about, is a 50-year plan, 50-year building that's going to serve, uh, your students, um, in Wallingford. Where we're at right now, and I think, uh, and, and I apologize for SLAM not being available. We were notified Friday, so I want to apologize on their behalf. And we're keeping it brief because they are the experts in the ed spec. I'm familiar with them. I, I don't want to speak on their behalf or speak out of turn. I want to make sure, you know, we can bring them back and they can speak to it. But I just want to clarify that they're the ones who, this is all their work. Um, the, the copy of the draft ed spec that you have with respect to programming and how do we get to square footages? They are the experts in that. Where Colliers comes in, 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 into the mix is, uh, we're an owner's project manager. Uh, I lead our K-12 division in Connecticut. We have a staff of folks that we manage many projects throughout. The state of Connecticut, um, your neighbors in New Haven, with their middle, their middle school. Uh, we did the pre-grant, uh, work up in Cheshire that you might be familiar with and, and in many other towns. So, um, with respect to how, how the process goes, we are, we like to think ourselves as experts in that. Um, the ed specs, uh, is really probably step two of many steps before we even get to filing a grant application. The first step was the enrollment projections, but probably the first one's probably the vote to go to one high school. Um, but with respect to the technical steps is, um, getting the enrollment projection. And the reason we do that is that, um, we obviously need to know how many students we're going to have in the building. That drives how many classrooms and the number of spaces, et cetera. I think that is fairly straightforward. What it also does is, is tells us if we're going to file a, a, a grant application, uh, there's what we call a space standard that the state uses. It's a regulatory space standard that says what, how many square feet are they willing to reimburse the district on? And that's what we do is we project out for, um, eight years beyond the grant application. So currently, uh, the plan is to submit a grant application in June of 2026. And the deadline's June 30 of each year statutorily. So we're now looking for this year, there's not enough time in five months to plan a project of this magnitude. We recommended to the Board of Ed to shoot, to, to the goal for June of, 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 uh, 30 of 26. Give ample time, as councillor Carmody mentioned, to, to obtain all your, your input, your public input. Uh, you want to make sure it's well-baked, that we've thoroughly, um, vetted, uh, all aspects of the project. Um, and especially the budget, the budget's really, uh, the driver in what folks are most concerned about because you're paying taxes on it, you're getting reimbursement on it. But the ed spec is really, again, step two after, um, after the enrollment projection. And the impact this has is enormous. Um, it not only tells you the size of the building, but that the building size, if you look at a budget, the building itself probably constitutes 60 to 65% of your total project budget. So it's substantial. So to get this part of it right and properly sized is vital. Again, it's a draft, um, uh, the Board of Ed and their constituents are reviewing it. Um, and there's going to be tweaks to it. There's probably going to be cuts to it. There's probably going to be shavings to it, uh, in many different areas. Uh, we're gonna, and, and, um, but it's, I just want to reassure, this is one step of many. Uh, and as the superintendent mentioned, um, this cannot happen solely by the Board of Ed. The state requires approvals by your body. Um, approval for, for the superintendent to file a grant application in itself. Without that approval, they can't do anything, uh, along with the, uh, obviously with the, with the funding. Um, so with that said, um, uh, with the, with the ed specs, uh, when we were presenting to the Board of Ed, uh, SLAM certainly went through all the programming and stuff, probably the educators are more, uh, in, in concern with. Um, and we suspect, uh, your body probably more concerned with probably, certainly with that, but more probably the financial impact and reimbursement. And, and we're projecting that, and, and, and that's something that we can, that I can speak to as an expert in that. So what we, um, though we do is we're, um, these are excerpts. This table here is in the ed spec. And kind of want to just walk through, um, how the, uh, enrollment projection impacts the size of the building, how the ed spec impacts it, and that space standard that we spoke about, how we compare these and how that could, uh, potentially affect your reimbursement. And, and again, how much money you get back from the state, because what we want to do is maximize that reimbursement, uh, for that. Again, this is an area that I can speak to with a, a high level of detail. So this table again is, uh, table two, two dash three from the draft ed spec. And, um, there's two columns to the right where it says without and with. And I apologize, I, I took a snippet from the ed spec, but, uh, it's referring to, uh, with a pool or without a pool. And, and with a high school, this is always a major discussion decision, um, because there's a lot of ramifications to having a pool. Uh, the operating costs are, are, are pretty high with a pool. Um, but there's a lot of benefits, obviously, not only to the school operations, but also to the community and community uses. So this is a very, um, engaged topic also, uh, and, and it hasn't been determined. Um, but, uh, in the left column, you see there without, um, the first line item is what we call the gross, they're saying estimated building area is a gross square foot. And just from a definition standpoint, that is the foot, basically the square footage to the outside face of the walls for the proposed building. That's the number that we use to develop, ultimately, when we get there, to develop your budget or a proposed budget for the project. This drives the cost, that's 60 to 65%, that number is a major driver. Um, so as you can see, without the pool, it's roughly 316,000 square feet. With the pool, it's roughly 338,000 square feet, okay? Um, the next li- uh, line item down is, uh, they're calling the net, um, gross area proposed. Um, we equivolate, equiv- uh, that's equivalent, um, we're going to be comparing that to the next line item down is the space standard. Just to kind of give you a visualization of what exactly is that? If you were to just take a simple square building, that measurement is to the inside face of the exterior wall. So you have a thickness of your walls, if it's a block, it could be eight, 14 inches. That measurement is an inside face of wall. That is statutory by the state. Um, that's not our choice. They, that's what they measure it to. It's actually a building code definition, the building area, um, is inside face of exterior wall. And that, that's what we're going to compare it to your space standard. So on line two, um, and it, and it's about approximately 95% of the gross square feet. We, uh, we agree with SLAM that the exterior walls are, on average, 5% of your, your total building. Uh, so you can see it's slightly, slightly lower, uh, 300,000 roughly without the pool and about 322,000 with the pool. The line below is the space standard, um, for the enrollment of 1,605 students. Um, that is a Excel spreadsheet that the state publishes. Anyone, anybody can look it up and, and enter these values in for the grades and population, um, that are shown. And this is the, the, the number of 282,873. Statutorily, um, the state of Connecticut will say this is what we will reimburse up to and make it eligible. Anything above that, uh, short of a space waiver, state space standard waiver, whether administratively or legislatively, um, would theoretically be, uh, uh, on the town's dime for that. And I'm going to show the math in that to show you exactly how that's applied because some, some districts and taxpayers say they're not going to pay for that square footage. It's actually an impact to your reimbursement rate that is applied to the eligible cost. And I just kind of walked through because as we get into the budgets and we start talking about them in the district share, these are the numbers we're going to be talking to. And we think it's important that we all understand what do these numbers mean for it. Uh, as you can see in line four, that's the variance. Uh, so with the pool, it's 38,000 square feet above the space standard. Without the pool, it's currently 17,741. Again, these are draft numbers that are going to get fine-tuned, um, as we go. Line five is the eligibility factor, or I call the space standard ratio. And we're, and the next slide, we're going to kind of show you in a much more simplified version. So if you could bear with me. The eligibility or space standard ratio is, um, basically taking line three and dividing it by line four. So, and with, with, without the pool, they're taking that point 9409 is equal to the 282,873 divided by 300,614. And conversely, the 282 divided by the 321, uh, to equal the point 88. This is what's really, really important. Those ratios, if we were to build this building, say with the pool as a, for an example, and we didn't obtain a space waiver, meaning we didn't ask the state to waive the additional 38,000 square feet and make it eligible, they're going to take that ratio of point 88 and multiply it by the rea- the current reimbursement for fiscal year '25 is 44.28%. Now, if you go to refer, we go to, if, well, if, we know you don't go to refer automatically, but if you, if you do, whatever, whenever you pass your funding, whatever fiscal year it is in, we're going to use that current year. Right now, we don't have fiscal year '26, so we can't tell you what that is. Uh, but the, it, it doesn't fluctuate much. It might go up to close to 45. They're going to take the point 88 and multiply it and apply it to the 44.28. And it'll ultimately reduce down to, I think it's around 37% if I, if I, and on the next slide, I'm going to show you the exact math. Any questions on that so far, uh, before I keep going? Okay, if there is, just please stop me. So, oh, yes, please.
Yeah, I just want to, the 1605-
Yes.
And you're getting that from, I'm looking at the large, um, document, the thick one, right?
Yes.
Um, and I understand the eight years, but I'm trying to figure out, how do those projections come to be? And, and this is what I'm looking at. If we look at the 2027, 2028 year.
You're looking at the NESDAQ study with a, with-
Yeah, it says space program summary. And I think that's where you got the 1605 from, right?
That is correct.
And you're carrying that through. So I'm, I'm looking at the data that comprises that because that's all, um, it's supposition, uh, as you said, maybe fine-tuned in, in, in the future, right?
Yes.
So I'm looking at a particular line, 2027, 2028. And I would think that that is based upon perhaps eighth graders that are in the system now. They're going to be in ninth grade or, or they're going to be in sixth now, right? A couple of years from now, right? So looking at that line, um, those children, um, enter ninth grade, there's 415 of them. By what do we determine that in one year that student population is going to decrease by almost 60 students from one, in one year? In, from ninth grade to 10th grade, we're not talking about junior high, we're talking about high school.
Yep.
How is that, where does that come from?
I'm going to take a crack at it and, 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 um, superintendent can opine on it. So, um, an independent firm, NESDAQ, um, did the enrollment projections. They're an independent firm. Um, and they take, and, and I'm not an expert in it, so I'm going to give you my best, um, definition. So basically, um, when they do enrollment projections for a district, there's many, many factors that go into the projection. There's a lot of different models and statistical models that go into that. Um, birth rates, um, they look at housing projections, they look at housing sales. They'll talk to the planning department to see, you know, is there new, um, developments that are maybe coming into town? Are they, um, uh, single-family homes or multifamily developments? There's different birth rates that come out of each of those theoretically, um, from each of those. Um, they'll look at also the, your past enrollment projection, um, uh, trajectories and kind of what has happened over the past. NESDAQ has a, a whole study on it that substantiates these numbers. And their model basically projects these out based upon the cohorts too, because in each grade, you may have a, a, a fifth or sixth grade cohort that has more students because of either, over the years, more births, uh, that may have been in Wallingford or there might be move-ins during COVID. A lot of folks, I think we probably saw, came from, uh, New York City and others, um, you know, urban areas, uh, to, to Connecticut. Um, but typically, these are, these are driven by a, a multitude of these factors. And I'm, I'm probably hacking up their definition if they're-
Oh, and I, I, I got it. So assuming, assuming that all to be true, okay? This third party has determined that in one year, this town is going to lose 60 students, right? Going from ninth to 10th.
Hmm.
In the calendar year of 2027, 2028, right? That's, that's-
That's what the data says, yes.
Being represented to us.
Hmm.
Then please explain to me why the very next year, there is absolutely no change.
I, I can't answer that per-
It doesn't make sense.
I'd have to defer to NESDAQ.
The numbers are exactly the same, 392-
Yep.
In ninth grade, carrying over to 10th grade, 392.
Hmm.
A deviation of, of zero. Where in the, you know, if we look at the- Where in the, you know, if we look at the other years, I mean, is.
I understand the comment, but I, we don't do the projection enrollments.
No, I know, but the problem is, is that you're, if you're basing a lot of these computations, studies on the ultimate number, which is sixteen oh five.
Yep.
You know, it's, it's the old computer thing, garbage in, garbage out, right?
Agreed.
So if the number you're starting with is significantly faulty, then everything that flows from that number is significantly faulty. And as you said, this is the, probably the most major thing that this town is going to do in the next fifty years. And I'm concerned, like, like just on this one page. So, you know, I'll, I'll defer, but because we were talking about sixteen oh five, I thought it was.
Yeah, under, totally understand and, and understand that logic. And I'm sure we can follow up with, with the firm too. If there's any questions with respect to the enrollments, we can reach back out to them, ask, answer those questions for sure. We, we take them at face, we have to take those at face value though. We, you know, we don't, and Slam does as well. They don't do the, they used to do enrollment projections, their team has moved on. There's another group in Connecticut that are highly qualified as well. If we wanted to get a second opinion, they're available and they're, they do enrollments throughout Connecticut. They have a deep database as well, if that's of interest to the town collectively.
The other, and, and just the other thing I just want, you note that the ninth through twelfth, the total column on the right-hand side. Next year is the low, well, it's one of the lower numbers, but then the trend is up. Every year, the trend is up. So based upon the chart that we're presented with, the number, the sixteen oh five, if you look at the history, the numbers based upon this chart will continue to trend up. Not that I agree with that, but that's what the data is showing.
Yes.
So, you know, if we're going to cap what we're doing at sixteen oh five, once again, I defer.
Yeah, and I think i- i- if, if I can, I think I understand what you're talking about is like, so the state of Connecticut, the statute is they only allow us to project out to the eighth year. We've done studies where they go at ten years and yes, you see that trend continuing. However, statutorily, they're only going to allow to reimburse up to that, up to that, the eighth year, which in this table is a sixteen oh five. Just for clarity, when this draft report came out in December, we received an updated draft from NASDAQ that hasn't been included. The current in that draft, and again, those, they both were, were published at the same time. I'm just, I just want to be fully transparent with, with the council. When I was looking at the twenty-four that they put in December, it's actually one thousand five hundred seventy. So there'll be an update to this on that. I just want to put, make sure you all know that, that when we're reviewing it, it's slightly lower than the sixteen oh five, just for full transparency.
All right, onto Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on that, no, my, my major concern, we're looking at these numbers now and getting on that. What happens when, you know, we have a lot of land in town that's undeveloped. There's a lot of farms that are currently trying to sell, we know that. What happens if, you know, we're basing all of these decisions on a projection? And then, you know, two of the farms that are several hundred acres sell and we end up with five hundred houses? I mean, what, what happens then? And now we build a high school that's too small and we're, you know, what you said before is this high school should last us fifty years.
Yep. Yeah, so a good example of that actually occurred in South Windsor, Connecticut. You probably, it sounds like.
I brought it up in prior meetings.
Sounds like you're familiar with that. So we were the owners rep for that program for the full ten years. In two thousand seventeen, we finished our first elementary school. It was projected to be the largest one with five hundred seventy-six kids for the eight-year high. And that was the first year. We built it, they opened up with six hundred and thirty-three kids. They had a, a affinity group. I, I think there was a lot of folks, maybe from the Middle East that came to Hartford on visas to work. And in that specific town, there was a fairly large supply of two and three-bedroom condominiums that were older. And similar to this town, there's a lot of farmland that is being sold that developers are developing at an extremely rapid rate. They've been growing approximately, this might have changed, but it was about twelve percent. They were higher than, all the rest of the, in their Derg, it's, you know, the standing for that. Is there, the rest of the schools in their category were around one or two percent. South Windsor's at twelve. So when we built the first school, we had to convert a computer lab into a classroom for day one. Every year since that time, and we did a second phase with two other schools and a third phase with the fourth school we just finished in twenty twenty-three. The fourth school was projected to be the smallest school, is now the largest school. It's over a hundred thousand square feet with over eight hundred, eight hundred and three was the, was that? So to kind of answer what you're saying, we've seen it. We have to update, we have to continually yearly update the enrollment projections to stay as current as possible. Problem is, it's a projection. It, it, right, it's, we're, we're, like, as, as you said, Counselor Fishmine, it's, it's garbage in is garbage out. So we need to continually update these enrollment projections. So as if we apply in twenty-six, we're going to do, we'll update in, in that fall twenty-six. If, if that gets modified, and this design, by the way, it's going to take a couple of years. This will take at least twenty-four months to design this building. If we're finding that it's upticking, first thing we're doing, we're going to look at, we're going to be talking to the state and say, listen, we have, this thing's jumping. It's, it's, it's going higher. We can apply and, and tell them we need to make the building bigger. There's a certain point where you have to stop design, you have to build the building too. So we just have to keep current with the enrollment projections. And, and if we're seeing that trends going up, that's where there's that collective, I think that collective discussion between the town collectively to go, yes, we know that the state's only going to reimburse on the eight-year high. Do we want to make a conscious decision to overbuild to account for that? And that's obviously comes down to dollars and cents and, and, and how, how big do you overbuild? How many more classrooms do you build? So it's a very dynamic discussion, but we have to keep up with enrollment projections every year.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, I mean, I don't need to harp on this, but I guess the other option is, or we say, we have the space now in the two existing buildings. So maybe we don't want less room and we want to leave some room for growth, which would be another option.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this point? Counselor Reynolds?
Thank you. So the sixteen oh five is really fifteen seventy?
Yes, with the December twenty-four that was published, they didn't have this data when they published the.
So is, is fifteen seventy the high or is fifteen seventy the thirty-three?
That's the eight-year high.
So fifteen, okay.
It starts the October after you submit your grant application. So the twenty-six, twenty-seven year theoretically in the schedule, that's the first of eight years.
So based on that, our reimbursement rate will go down. Well, so.
So that's another, that's another step in the discussion.
But if the square footage is based on the high and then there's a formula to determine the square footage and based on the number of people.
If it went down and we, if we maintain the program as it is now, yes, it's just going to, and, and make that deficit larger.
So I, I personally don't have a problem with population projections. They, they fluctuate over time. I, I think that this table is actually pretty fair. It does say that it's going to drop by a hundred and twenty students over the period. And it actually reflects a drop of sixty students, which then puts the other sixty somewhere in the lower grade. So I don't have a problem with the population estimates. I mean, just to the point about like development and all those things, I watched the planning and zoning meeting last night and developers are saying that it's going to take us twenty years to reach possibly the amount of housing that is required for people to live in the state, like twenty years. So I don't think there's enough space in our town for an influx of people to come in and make all of this go squarely in terms of data and numbers. Just, again, putting on my, because I, I kind of deal in epidemiology and population statistics. I don't think that we necessarily have to worry about an influx of people that large unless we're able to build enough housing to transition the people who are of retirement age out of those houses to put people in. But that's another thing all time entirely. So anyway, I just wanted to, I was going to ask, my only question was going to ask if the sixteen oh five was the eight-year high, it is.
It is the eight-year high and that was based on the spring twenty twenty-four and that's the data that Slam had when they published this. We'll have to update it with the December twenty-four numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kindly continue.
Yeah, great questions, by the way. Yeah, and, and then the, the table two, two dash two is, is basically the calculation. And there's a spreadsheet, we just wanted to demonstrate, you know, how that works. So with the, with the current, the sixteen oh five, the, when you, when you calculate in their spreadsheet, the average square foot per pupil is that one seventy-four point five? You just multiply those together and you, you get the net gross, they call it net gross level. This is Slam, they get very specific with the terminology of two hundred eighty thousand seventy-two square feet. The statute, when you install new air conditioning to build, they give you an additional one percent by statute, as, as you see there. So the, the, the space standard for the sixteen oh five is that two hundred eighty-two thousand eight seventy-two, rounding seventy-three, that's probably decimals here for that. And so, so that's where you, that's where, that's the number we're going to be comparing to on the, on the next slide. Basically just showing this math a little bit more simplified. And where you see the, the, the bottom line, estimated gross building areas, I mentioned earlier, and we agree with Slam, the exterior walls, the thickness of them is approximately, and it varies approximately five percent of, of the building area. And so that says we should be about two, you know, per space center, we about two hundred ninety-seven thousand gross square feet. Okay. So I think this next slide will probably be a little bit easier. So again, we talked about that space standard ratio. It's the space center square foot, the two eighty-two divided by whatever we're proposing to build. In this case, again, we've kind of went through this in depth, so it should be pretty straightforward. The sixteen oh five is two hundred eighty-two eight seventy-two. The proposed building area with the pool, and I'm using this for the examples, that three twenty-one, three eighty-five, again, from table two point three. So there's that math. Again, we, we can all do it. I just want to kind of show it more for the public as well because we're trying to educate folks on, you know, how do we come up with these numbers? The tables didn't necessarily show it as cleanly, so I just want to kind of clarify that. And then the, so this is where, where the reimbursement rate gets affected. Okay. If we didn't get a space standard and we built this today, as, as, again, your, your rate is forty-four point two eight, the math would reduce you from forty-four point two eight percent to thirty-eight point nine seven percent without reductions in the building area, the program or space standard waiver. We've, we've achieved those, either partial ones through the state or you can do them legislatively. We don't, that's, that's a political decision really. We don't necessarily recommend or not recommend it, but so, so it's not about that, that thirty-eight thousand square feet they're not going to pay for. It's a reduction in your reimbursement rate. And I just want to be clear with that because sometimes that gets a little misconstrued. So when you're, you're talking, what, six percent roughly, round numbers? On whatever the eligible costs will be, it's going to be a large number. Six percent of hundreds of millions is, is, you know, fifteen, twenty million dollars probably. So it's a big number that needs to be, we need to be aware of as we're developing, finishing the ed specs. And as we, as we develop that and we develop your budgets, we, we will give you the, the calculate these numbers live and what that impact will be as we move forward. So these two slides are really, there is a lot of discussion with the Board of Ed. And I thought that your counsel might be interested in expanding that further. And I think, again, as we go through future meetings together, this is going to be a basis for a lot of discussions. So understanding, I think, hopefully will help all you make decisions, so. Any, any questions on that before we move forward? I think we've gone through that in pretty, pretty detail. Great.
I did, I just had a quick question.
Oh, sure.
The, the board will decide when they're finalizing the ed specs, whether there's a pool in this project or not?
So what we'd like to do is kind of go back and that is a piece of it. So we're going to look at, continue with the pool or without the pool, which avenue. Take the feedback from what we've gotten thus far from the public and all stakeholders. And then look at that and go back and have further discussion as to where we are with everything as opposed to where the reimbursement is. And so that's why when I said earlier that it's the very beginning stages in the draft, because there's a lot of things to consider, to go back and look at the programming, what we put into this building, how much do we need based on the student population? I mean, just by NASDAQ coming out with the new enrollment numbers. And again, I understand, you know, the concerns around that, but the December twentieth, twenty-four report that they gave us changes the numbers again, which will change all of this. So again, it's going to be a, a constant go back, going back and revising and reviewing. What are the most important educational, educational things we want for our students? And then how does that match with the reimbursement, with the space standards, taking all those components?
So you see, you see the ed specs changing throughout this process, all the way up to the submittal to the state, pretty much?
It can, yes. And so it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the Board of Education can approve it, but then things could change and then they go back and approve it again and they make amendments to it and approve it again. And so, I mean, at some point, we'll have to stop making those changes to it when we submit the grant. But it's something that can be tweaked and changed through the process.
Thank you.
And if, if I can apply on the pool, because we're, we're working on a project now that, a, a high school, the, the one in Stanford there. We're looking at the pool. It's a major, major conversation and it's a major budget piece to that. And it's a collective discussion between Board of Ed and, and the Governing Board of Finance and RTMs of, yes, is it part of the school? But it is a commu- that is a major community asset as well at the same time. So it's a very passionate discussion, I'll say, a, a pool. You know, the operating costs and when it gets operated and when it gets used. And just a pure square footage. I mean, right now, we're, we're seeing project, if you looked at the priority list for twenty twenty-four and looked at the projects and just took the square footage, the proposed square footage and divided by the total cost, we're, we're almost around a thousand bucks a square foot, plus or minus. So when you're talking, you know, that many square feet for a pool, I think it's a collaborative discussion on that, is whether it stays or goes.
I agree. And I think the other thing to consider is if we eventually move this way and go to one high school, you know, consideration then the next level of what's happening with the other buildings. And so is there an opportunity then if you go without the pool and you make other decisions about the other buildings? One has a pool, one does not. Is that something that then we consider later on? So I think there's, you know, it's not a one and done. There's lots of options, so to speak. And so, and the discussions have to continue between the Board of Education and all of you as to next steps for that. So lots of different avenues, I guess, and things to consider as we move forward.
Wonderful. And then, you know, just talking next steps, again, that really, as, as we said, this is really step two or three of many steps. The draft ed spec is out for, for commentary and review. So we're going to be gathering those and evaluating those and, and also valuing the impacts on the program. Because it's not just a square foot discussion, it's also the programming and what the offerings to the students. So that's going to be a process in itself and that's not going to happen overnight. And the public outreach, I think that's been clearly stated in both meetings. That's, that, we foresee that going on probably through the end of this year. And again, maybe possibly up until we submit the application. There's going to be a certain point where a decision will have to be made so we can finalize the budget. We bring it to this, to, to ed spec to the Board of Ed, the budgets to the Town Council as well as the ed spec for approvals, because there's a lot of authorizations that need to occur in order to submit a grant application for that. Site selection, I think we mentioned, there's, you know, we don't know where this is going right now. It, it's to be determined. Transportation studies, traffic studies, site analysis studies, geotechnical borings. So a lot of work to go that's coming up. And again, it's not going to happen in the next two, three or four months. It's going to be multiple months to occur for that. There's probably more items I could probably list here. This is a real simple, simple kind of timeline, kind of showing, kind of, and, and this is fluid. It's going to change through, you can see the grant application in, you know, June of twenty twenty-six. You know, currently we're developing those ed specs, we're going to start drafting budgets, high-low probables, where we're saying here, here's the range. And as we get closer, we're going to, we're going to dial them in. Site selection and all those other studies we discussed. Public outreach, again, that bar can extend into twenty twenty-six certainly. But we show approval of the ed specs by the Board of Ed and the Board of Ed has the statutory approval on that. Again, that can happen up to the submission of the grant application. There's times where we actually change them during the design because of, of an enrollment projection might occur. They have to reauthorize, we have to resubmit to the state for their approval. We're showing potential budget approval by your body in early twenty twenty-six, but that's to be determined, the timeline, when that will happen. We have to map that out with specific dates. We have to map that out with specific dates and then compiling of the grant application. There's a lot of documents. It's the ed specs. It's the approved meeting minutes, your approvals, any resolutions to whether your body approves the funding or if it does eventually go to a referendum. Again, this is very, very high, high kind of timeline and subject to change. We just wanted to outline some of the major major thing, major items that are going to have to occur. But this will get refined, and you'll see a high level of detail as we proceed through it.
Question? Starting with Counselor Tada.
Thank you. Just quickly, this is just about a statement you made before that previous slide. You said at some point the decision will have to be made. What decision are you referring to?
Oh, I'm sorry. On the final option of what the project is, what the ed spec is, where it's going to be cited, whether there's a pool or not, basically what the final scope of your project is and where it's going. You know, because you're going to get public comment of, and a lot of input. Eventually, the town collector will have to make the decision. Okay, this is what the project will be.
So you're referring to the Board of Ed's decision of what the school will look like? Or you're referring to the Board of Ed's decision of are they doing this project at all?
So it's it's really collaborative. I don't know if you want to take a stab at that first.
So I think the Board of Ed already made the decision for the one consolidated high school. The other components, as we go through, while the Board of Education will make the approval on the ed specs. I think our hope is that this continues to be collaborative. So as we go through, everyone is aware and has an opportunity to ask questions as to what's in this ed spec because that will drive what the cost will be. And then as we move on to looking for a site, I think that will be something else that'll have to have some discussion on as to where that's going to be, because then I can do or we can do the transportation and the traffic study that may follow for a potential location for one high school. And then ultimately, the entire project will come here for all of you to make the financial decision as to whether or not this is something all of you support. And if that's in the spring, I think we said of early spring of 2026, I believe. Because then if if the town chooses to go to the referendum, from the way I understand it, so please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe once you make a financial decision, then I believe there's 90 days or so much time for the people to go and then decide whether or not it's going to be to a referendum. And then to have that done before we submit a grant.
Yeah, I well, two things. I'll talk about the referendum in a second. I guess I just, I want to make it clear for the for the public. I know there are a few Board of Ed members here. I don't know if they wanted to speak tonight or not, but I just want to make it 100% clear. So we talked about the decision being made in the Board of Ed already just like voted to go to the one high school. That that's, I watched the Operations Committee last night. It sounds like that's that's done, right? So the Board of Ed is saying, we voted for the one high school. We are going ahead with this. So that's, that is currently what you're all working on, correct? I mean, that's the decision.
Yes, that is correct. That is the decision from the Board of Education. Yes.
I just want to make sure everybody's 100% clear on that because I I know it was clear last night, the Operations Committee meeting also, that the Board of Ed, this is their vote of the last Board of Ed, but they're continuing on that project. So as far as the the referendum is concerned, I I know I keep, I've heard a lot about, you know, for any, I'm not going to read the charter here, but it is on page seven of our charter, explains how the referendum works. So for anybody who's wondering how it works in Wallingford, that's where it is. But I'm reading it a little bit differently than I think a lot of people are. I keep hearing that some sort of financial decision needs to be made, and I'm not reading it that way. The first line says, "The electors shall have the power to approve or reject at a referendum as herein provided any ordinance or resolution, including an ordinance or other action appropriating or committing money." And then it continues. So I'm not necessarily convinced that we have to spend money. I think it could be any, if the council, I think if we chose to have a resolution that says that we don't want one high school, I think that could go to a referendum. Again, you know, that's just the way I'm reading it, but I just wanted to, you know, just throw that out there that, you know, if people are talking about a referendum, maybe just it might behoove people to to read the charter or see what what they think that process would be. That's all I have for now, Mr. Sherman. Thank you.
Thank you. On to Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you. Just on that point, that may be the case. However, there on a large project like this, there could be various points that could go to referendum. So there could be a resolution, and it doesn't get referendum. And then there is an appropriation, and that does get referendum. So it's not the the bile end all. I want to come back to the 1605 and the 1570 because I'm a little confused now because now that you got an updated number that indicates population at the eight years at 1570, based upon your answer to Counselor Reynolds' question, I think you said that the numbers would get adjusted? And why wouldn't we still be planning based upon the maximum projected population during the eight-year term?
So in the December report from Nezda, which SLAM did not have to incorporate into the ed spec, the revised eight-year high is that 1,570 number. It will replace the 1,605. It'll replace it.
Got it.
Sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
Was there any other numbers that?
No, just that one is just eight-year high. I was reviewing the last couple of days, and we just didn't want to come back in another three or four weeks or whenever, and it changes and say what happened to the numbers. So.
I'll leave that be for now because I'm sure those numbers are going to, I mean, if if a number eight years from now has already changed, I'm sure it's going to change, and other numbers are going to change. You know, I heard a lot tonight about concerns. And, you know, I had four conversations with residents today. And one of the concerns is that, you know, when this, the initial vote, the circumstances of that vote, where people complained they couldn't get on the system, the fact that, I mean, and I think this is true. I looked back and I've looked back. It never appears on a Board of Education agenda consolidation of high schools. That language doesn't appear. It says Collier's Report, right? But if I'm a mom sitting at home with a couple of kids, it's not invested in this and want to know about the consolidation of the high school as far as when I look at the agenda, I don't know what Collier's Report is.
The agenda from which meeting? From the the meeting when the board did the vote in January?
I'm talking current meetings, right? When you have, when Collier's comes and talks, right? It just says "Report on Collier's Report."
No, yesterday's Operations Committee agenda did not say that. It said, I'd have to pull it up. I don't have it in front of me. But it said one consolidated high school, and I think it talked about community outreach.
Okay. I looked at others, and it just said like Collier's.
Right. So I think Collier's came one other time that they did not come last night. We talked about our own, that was our own committee meeting. We did have Collier's come at one other time, and I do believe we did correct that agenda because someone did point that out to us. I'd have to go back and look at the previous agendas. I don't know off the top of my head.
What I was discussing with one of the the parents today. I've heard nothing about the planetarium now. I mean, I was involved in an organization that donated $25,000 to the redo of that planetarium. In fact, I think it's us and Yale that only have this this one planetarium in the state. What's going on with the planetarium should this plan come to fruition?
So that is definitely something we can consider to discuss. The questions did come up prior to this. At our Board of Education meeting, there were questions asked about that. And so when we get back together in January, that is something we'll discuss as to whether or not we want to move forward. At the time, the groups that we met with, these were, we took the feedback from all of the groups. But we can certainly go back and revisit that. But again, those are things we'll have to all take into account when we're looking at how big the high school will be. As to whether or not we duplicate it.
Yeah, I mean, and I would, you know, if I have infrastructure presently and would want to carry over that infrastructure to the dream high school, you know, I would have thought that that would be an ongoing consideration. But how much money has been spent right now on advancing the the one high school idea? Approximately?
Sorry, I thought I had it in my pile. I'm going to say approximately 245,000. I'm going to say approximately. But again, that's from the start of this project when Dr. Menzo started it, continuing through now.
Okay, and Collier's was contracted in August of 2023.
Correct.
So it would be the 2023 budget that I would refer to to ascertain where that expenditure came from. So I didn't see anything like that on the 2023 budget. So where is this money coming from?
To to pay the consultants, I believe we're taking it out of 2%.
Some of it, I believe it went out of 2%, and some of it went out of the surplus at the end of the year. One year, we had surplus that we we were projecting a surplus. We utilized it to hire for services.
Okay, so those were actions that didn't have to come to us. Because I don't recall us authorizing expenditure out of the 2% account for studies having to do with one high school. I I could be wrong, but I I'm up here a lot.
I think we've had, we've had, I think the Collier's was on the operating budget, for sure. I guess I would have to look at the other ones.
The only study that we talked about when the only time the Board of Ed came to us about this in official capacity was a transportation study. And and to my knowledge, a transportation study has still not been done, right?
Correct. But we also did, I believe we did a bid for these, the Silver, the study that, I think it was Silver Petroselli did the initial one. So, but I mean, we could, we can, there's not that many transactions. I think we can, you know, research that and let you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm a little concerned because I know we've sort of been at a standstill, quite frankly. Because there's been no like official ask from us. There was staff that was let go over the last two years. And if at the end of the day, this doesn't come to be, then we've got expenditures of money and, you know, maybe students in the classroom aren't getting the level of education that they they would have gotten if those expenditures weren't made. And that's, it's not for me to decide, but you know, I'm I'm concerned, and I'll go on. Have we found out about the VOAG situation? And I brought this up over a year ago. If we move VOAG, what is the potential financial? If we close the VOAG, what is the potential financial? Have we gotten those answers yet? Because I I said if we improve VOAG, you know, how can they penalize us, right? I threw that out there, and, you know, I was told that we were going to, somebody was going to look into that. Did we get answers on that?
So I think that's a piece of what we had talked about was going back and looking because, as I shared earlier, VOAG was accepted twice at two different times. There's a four-year difference. If we go by the first time it was accepted, which I did find the board agenda and the minutes to that, and I did share that with the state, then the grant has been fulfilled in 2030. The other piece of that to consider is if you do one new high school, what are we doing with the ASTE program? We'd like to continue with the ASTE program. If we choose to add it to this one new location that we potentially find, it's a new grant. It's a separate grant. So it's separate than this grant for the one high school. If we choose to leave the program exactly where it is and only leave that portion of it, the other piece we need to continue, again contingent upon where we find a site, would be, is it possible, depending on the site location, to bus the students back and forth from the current location of where it is now to wherever the one high school is? That would be something we'd have to consider. It may fragment the children's education from the students' education. I wouldn't say that's the best choice. But again, these are things we have to kind of dive into a little bit more and look at.
So we haven't got an answer from the state?
I'd have to go back and look. But it, in my opinion, I'd have to go back and look and see, but they were reviewing both sets of documents, both from 20, from the two different times that we've accepted the ASTE program. The first time we accepted it, the students had been in the program. So I think we have a good case for saying that that's when it should start from.
And then, you know, the the representation that the Board of Ed didn't select a location, I'm having trouble with that one because, you know, as you recall, this room was packed. It was, there was a lot of parents. A lot of them feel that they were blindsided by by the vote, but that's a different issue. There was a lot of talk about how long it would take to travel from Sheen area, right, Highland to Lyman Hall. And all the drawings we saw that night, all the renderings were at the Lyman Hall site. And there was talk about how we couldn't abandon the VOAG because we didn't know what was going to happen and all that stuff. You know, I I left that meeting with the impression that the Board of Education was anticipating having a very large high school on that site. And I think that's what the general public believed also. So where's the disconnect on on that issue?
So I went back and looked, and the only picture of it is on the first page of that presentation back on March 28 of 2023. Prior to me, Dr. Menzo had looked with Dave Stein and Silver Petroselli and did a feasibility study. So they looked to see due to the fact that the ASTE program was there, could it potentially hold that property? One high school, one renovated new high school. It was a high level, very high level look as something that could potentially happen. When the Board of Education made their decision in January of 2023, they only made the decision for one consolidated high school. They did not choose a location. When I went back and looked at the studies that we did back in 2018, it did indicate Lyman Hall being the property or the surveys that went out and the electric bills, it did indicate that consideration for one high school on the Lyman Hall property. And so that was where that was continued. But the Board of Education never took a vote on where to put it. After we came and presented the information, and yes, the room was packed that evening, it, you know, I think all of us walked away feeling that if this project was to go move forward, again, my opinion only right now, and I don't want to speak on behalf of all of the board members, but it probably is best that if we find one central location for the high school as best we can, knowing what is available here in town, that's kind of, that's a challenge. But I think if it is something that is going to move forward, in my opinion, it probably needs to be on one centralized location. Once we pick a site, then we can definitely do the transportation study from that site and talk to specialty transportation to do that for us, potentially to give me an initial look and then a traffic study from there.
Right, and I appreciate that. And and that's the last part of my my thing. Mr. Warington, you know, you've been doing this at Collier's for about 10 years. I know you were at Eastern for about 10 years before that. Have you ever done a project like this without a site?
As far, we're not finalized. You mean as far as the ed spec or?
No, that
We never authorize you, we wouldn't authorize a project without a a a site determined, is the answer. You can't do it because if you don't know, if, say, if it's a parcel that the town doesn't own, we don't know what the budget for the purchase unless you put an exorbitant amount of, you know, a line item for site acquisition into it. But the answer is no, we would not do it on like a, you know, like a prospective site. There has to be a site determined. The state of Connecticut is going to want to know what site. They're not going to give you a grant without a site.
And don't you think it would be prudent since we are, you know, it's not like we can build a high school And don't you think it would be prudent since we are, you know, it's not like we can build a high school in Meriden, right? We, it's a finite amount of land. Don't you think it would be prudent if we had some sort of traffic study that gave the town quadrants and said, hey, you know, this is the easiest area to reach and that you should be looking to get it there, or, you know, or perhaps talking about having the academics in the center of town and maintaining athletic facilities at the current facilities where you currently work, that, that would skew your ed specs, right? It would skew the, the, the site plan, the academic area, the transportation study would be different. All of this work would be treated differently. You would agree?
Yeah, sure. So you hit on a couple of different things there. So let me just kind of try to consolidate. First, the ed spec is the driver of the project. That's the core. That's your nucleus really for, for the program, right? And regardless of what site we go on, we have to do an ed spec. We need to understand what the size of the building will be. It also talks about site appurtenances, athletic fields, et cetera, and support. Now, whether or not those are athletic, you know, use the example of athletic fields, you know, maybe VOAG versus and bifurcating, that's up to the Board of Ed. That's statutorily their decision by statute. The State Department of Education gives them that authority by statute. Now, with respect to the transportation study, we gotta back up a step, and there are guidelines that the state has for high schools, and I think it's, and I'd have to double check, but last I remember, I think it's 25 acres plus one acre for every 100 students. So in this example, we're roughly, say, 1600, we're looking at about 40, 41 acres as a guideline. We, you can build them on smaller, but it all depends on the configuration, the topography, wetlands, subsurface, there's a lot of factors, right, I think we can all imagine. So that's really gonna drive where this is gonna go, because how many 40-plus acre parcels do you have in, in the town? I don't know all the parcels. But you need at least 40 acres, and it depends how that's arranged. If it's cut up by wetlands and it's, you know, bifurcated by a stream or whatever have you, inland waters, it may not be conducive to a high school operation. So that's where we really start, is the size of the building, number of students. We're approximately, we're saying probably 40 acres plus or minus, again, depending on its factors. So now, what we would do is, and we did this in Cheshire, we're looking how many, how many parcels might be available, whether town-owned, private-owned, that can do that. It's probably not gonna be a large list, I would, I would imagine. And then, depending on where, what we typically do, and we call it a test fit, and that's what they kind of did, is a test fit of, and it's not the exact floor plan, but architects kind of have a pretty good idea of, you know, for this type of building, you're gonna have your gym, you're gonna have your auditorium, it's an auditorium pool, couple-story administration space. They might do a test fit to say, yeah, it might reasonably fit on this area. We're gonna show a track and a field, we're gonna show a baseball field, a softball field, parking, circulation, et cetera. That's a test fit for it. And the test fit's gonna tell us, should we really explore any further or not? It might indicate, nah, the site's not really worth it based upon our experience. That one, you cross that one out. But the one that we do say, okay, where there might be two or three, then you might start looking at the transportation studies at that point. Because if, if there's none, say, on the north side, north end of, of town, or maybe on the south end of town, to study that, it might be a waste in effort on doing that. So we really gotta focus in on where are the potential sites based upon the ed spec and the size of the building and the program.
And we've heard the superintendent tonight, and I agree, that a school, you know, the, the least conflict you're gonna get is if a one high school is in the center of town. You aren't gonna be able to put 40 acres together. It's just a simple fact of the matter. I mean, Cheshire is a very rural, I mean,
Yeah.
they don't have a downtown, so to speak.
Yeah, very different town, don't get me wrong, but...
sort of village area, you know, you can travel the roads, you know, I'm there, all that stuff. Wallingford, you know, Route 5 is, is congested, right? And that's the center of town. So, you know...
I, I think the terminology, if I may, might, and a little bit that I've heard of the conversation, might be a neutral site. Not one of the two existing sites, might be, the terminology to use is a neutral site that's neither Sheehan or, or Lyman.
If you ask this town, there is not a 40-acre site that would accommodate this, in, in my opinion. And, and I think it holds true because we're here, I mean, Dr. Menzo's been gone a while now, right? And we still don't have a site. So I'm very concerned about the amount of money that's being spent to here in 2026. We can't find a site, and we're gonna rehab the two existing, which, you know, because, you know, at the same time, the junior high schools need help, and our kids need educating. And I'm very concerned about this unnecessary distraction that I just don't see coming to fruition, and with that, I defer.
We have a councillor Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is 2030 the ceiling date for the VOAG, or is there a date past that? So is 2030 like the worst-case scenario, or?
No, it would be 2034, I believe.
So, let's just say hypothetically, that we find a site, and we all agree upon it, and then we move forward. If my understanding's correct, and I, with the information that was shared with us today from town clerk, we won't theoretically step foot into a new high school for, so 26, June 26 is the grant. We hear back in a year? Yeah, I mean, so, so 27, we hear. So then it takes two years to plan, so now we're at 29. And then it's gonna take three years to build it. So now we're at 32. So, and that's, that's if everything happens from now, perfect. And, and I'm using the higher end of the estimates. So first, for people who are concerned about it, just so you know, it's seven years from now, right? Seven years from now when the doors open to the new high school. So if your child is in second grade and a new high school opens in this perfect timeline, they will be the first ninth graders at this new high school, right? So second grade. And if you're in third, you're in fourth, you're in fifth, you can, we can all do math, right? So if your child is in middle school now, they won't go to this school. If your child is in high school now, they won't go to this school. And if your child is in fifth grade or fourth grade, they probably won't go to this school either. So really, it comes more about a discussion about vision and moving forward, and I guess, I guess that, am I mistaken that Lyman Hall can't support a building, school this size? Is that, is that correct? The site for Lyman Hall really wouldn't be appropriate for this, given what we know about the space around it, given what we know, everything? I mean, is that, or, or could Lyman Hall be a potential?
I honestly don't think it could be a potential. We'd have, I think the, the first, that test fit by Silver was a combination of additions and, and we call it alterations or renovations. So you add on, you maybe move, you know, you, you have to swing it around and phase it, and the, the students and operations would be in an active, shared in an active construction site, if you will. We've certainly done that in, in many projects on very tight sites. Has to be studied, it's gotta be planned carefully. Could it? I, I think so. We'd have to study the site further, the geography of it, the shape of it and stuff like that. So I couldn't sit here and say no, because we just...
And you don't have to go out of your way for me either, because I'm not a fan of the site. I was just trying to get clarification on whether or not that actually is a site, because in some conversations I heard that it really isn't appropriate. I, I thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for having this discussion. I, I think that in order to go through an endeavor such as this, and, you know, with all due respect to the Board of Education, you really need a dog and pony show that you trot out, and, and you really wanna build some momentum behind the idea. Otherwise, it's largely people feeling like they're not heard. It's largely people feeling like, you know, they fill out a survey and then nobody pays attention to it. And I, I get all that frustration, and I hear lots of people's feedback. But I also am realistic in the sense that what we have right now doesn't work. And if you watched a meeting that I, you know, had an agenda item for, $35 million is what it's gonna cost for you to walk through the door in Lyman Hall today, and then 10 years from now, it's gonna look exactly the same. So if you wanna spend $35 million maintaining those buildings with no improvements, with no changes, with not a thing, that's the baseline cost. So if $200 million sounds like a lot to you, it is. $35 million isn't in my back pocket or anybody else's, and that's just what we're gonna spend on what we have now. Now, as a parent of a senior in high school at Lyman Hall, I can say that the administration, the teachers, the coaches, everybody, fantastic. Two students, two sons, go through. However, as a parent, I do feel gypped. I feel like I was kind of, you know, I kind of missed out on some stuff. In particular, because my son had to drop Spanish. Why? Because he was in the medical careers program. Medical careers program, what a great idea. Yeah, he became a CNA, and now he's a, you know, he works per diem at Regency House as a CNA, and he's a senior in high school, right? That's a pretty good deal, and he makes pretty good money. However, he had to drop Spanish because he was in honors Spanish, and in order for him to take the CNA program, he had to get on a bus and go all the way over to Sheehan every other day of the week. And because of that, they eliminated his ability to take Spanish. So he didn't take Spanish his junior year. And he wanted to achieve biliteracy, but he couldn't. So then he tried taking Spanish this year, and he ended up dropping it because he had missed a year. Now, I'm a parent, I'm a taxpayer, I'm also town councillor, but I'm also disappointed in the educational experience that my son had as a result of not having enough offerings of courses in Lyman Hall. As a result of him taking advantage of a very important program that he then had to make the choice. Do I wanna learn to speak a second language, or do I wanna take a career in medical careers? So I want everybody to kind of think about that. And I'll, and I'll, and I'll allude to one more thing, actually two. One, Lyman Hall doesn't have a pool. My son decided he wanted to be on the diving team. So every day, his freshman year, I drove over to Sheehan to pick him up and bring him home so that he could swim and dive on a team that doesn't have a pool. Now, if you wanna renovate both high schools, and you wanna put a pool at Lyman Hall, guess what? They're not gonna reimburse you for that. So you're gonna have to, you're gonna take a ding on the rehabilitation of that school if you put a pool in it. Guess what else they don't build? They don't chart, they don't let you buy. Turf for football fields. We just put two in. We just spent $1.4 million on a field at Sheehan, right? And that money ain't coming back, because the minute you open a new high school and you put in a football field there, you can build it, you can put in grass, but then you're gonna have to pay extra for the turf. So while we're trying to do all of this sort of mathematics in our head about what's it gonna cost, and how much is a report, and all those things, all valid, I want you to keep in mind of what we're paying for now, and what we're buying now, and what we're maintaining now, and in 10 years, what it's gonna look like, exactly what it does right now. And the offerings won't change, and if our population goes down, which it will, we're gonna have fewer offerings for students as well, which lead to people like me being not happy with the educational experience that my children have. Not because of the administrators, not because of the teachers, not because of the athletics, but specifically because of the design of the schools does not accommodate every student in it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Want a councillor Tatum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a bunch of notes, so I'm sorry if I get a little out of order here. But first thing, one of the, one of the ideas that came up as I was kind of talking to some teachers in town and residents, I think, you know, some of, some of the one high school ideas that we could have, you know, dynamic programming and a lot of these new things, and I think, I think something that maybe got glossed over is we can kind of have that with the two high schools, I think. So there's some really interesting ideas that some teachers even threw out to me, where if we kept the two buildings, that like one building becomes a tech school, or one building, sorry, I think I was too far away. One building maybe becomes like a tech school, and one building becomes more of like a college prep school. And depending on, you know, what students wanted to do, because we do have some wonderful offerings in our high schools, in my opinion, like the CNA program, the culinary program, there's, there's some really great things that we're currently offering in our high schools. And I understand that, you know, we're trying to offer more of this dynamic programming and offer it to as many as possible, but maybe there's a way to still do that and do some really creative things in the two buildings if we don't get this one. So I just wanted to say that, that there's, there's some great ideas from educators out there of, of maybe how to achieve everything that we want, even if we don't do the one high school. Square footage-wise, I was trying to, as you were presenting this, I was trying to wrap my head around, you know, what is 316,000 square feet? So I did a quick Google search. IKEA in New Haven, 311,000 square feet. So that, that's the size that we're, that we're talking. Actually, that's a little bit smaller than what we're talking about, because we're looking at 316 or 338. So just for people to get their head around the size, that's where you can picture IKEA in New Haven, 311,000 square feet. It's the largest retail facility in Connecticut that's occupied by a single tenant. So this is a, that's a massive building. So just so we understand what size we're looking at. I know this may get to our next item, I'm not really sure, but Superintendent Blissey, I know you've been fielding a lot of questions, and I appreciate that a lot, but I think, I think our elected officials on the Board of Ed maybe need to be answering more of these and maybe getting a little more involved, and again, maybe that will come up with our next agenda item. But, you know, I understand that the superintendent has a, maybe a different job than the elected officials. And I, I don't wanna say I feel bad for you, but I, I think your goals may be different than what elected officials are here to do. And for me, if I've, if I look back on my five years in the council, I don't think there's been a more, a topic that has been, maybe had more attention or been so strongly in favor of one side, in my opinion, as this. To me, and I said this two years ago, and I think it, maybe even more so now, I truly don't think that people in Wallingford want this. I think it's, I, we hear so much from our constituents, and a lot of times, it's a judgment call, and, you know, there's things, we get elected to make a judgment call. So we have to base our, our decisions on what we think is best, and maybe we don't hear a lot of feedback, or we only hear a little bit. We hear so much about this, and I just, I, I don't, I, to this point, and I said it two years ago, and I'm still in the same place, I don't think I can get behind this, because I don't think that the town wants this. So it was stated several times at last night's Board of Ed Operations Committee meeting that tonight is not about the one high school versus two high school debate. And it was stated many times recently by the Board of Ed that that voting decision has been made. And that's why I clarified that earlier in this meeting. So that's where the Board of Ed stands, and now it comes to us for funding. And so I think there's two issues at play. Money, so would consolidating the schools be a cost savings or not? And to councillor Reynolds' point, I think until we have those comparisons of if we renovated the two high schools, or we build one new one, you know, how do we compare the two? So I think we still need that information. And then obviously educationally, and, you know, which does the one consolidated high school provide a better education? You know, if yes, if it's a clear yes, then the money part becomes maybe less relevant, because maybe we say it is going to cost more, but to provide a better education, that's what the town's willing to do. But at this point, you know, five years in, I'm not convinced. I just haven't been sold yet that either financially or educationally that this is a great idea. So we have to decide if the town embarks on this massive expense, a massive cultural change for our town, and really, an educational experiment. And we have to decide, are we going to fund that? Do the people want us to fund this, this big change? Sorry, I'm just looking through my notes here. I, I agree with councillor Fitchman. I think I'm kind of frustrated too, that at this point, we're still chasing after something that we may not have a location for. So if, I'm not sure if the, if the board wants our opinion on this, if they, you know, if they're trying to do a straw poll, if they want our opinion. I think it's clear where I stand on this, if that's what the board's looking for. But I too think that unless we can find, I mean, we have enough info at this point to be able to find a site, right? So we know square footage, we kind of know acreage, we've, we, you have an idea. So for me, I think the next step logically might be to try to find that site. And if we can't find a site, then there's no need going into 2026 and continuing on this chase if there's nowhere to put this. So for me, as a councillor, and our role in this, I would like to see that come next. And that would also then allow the council to make a decision on something, because if a site is found, then we would be the ones that would... a site is found, then we would be the ones that would have to purchase that property. So I think that's maybe a logical next step. Um, again, you know, the board obviously, um, is free to continue how they see fit. Uh, but that's, that's just my thoughts right now, um, based on the comments of the Operations Committee last night. I, I wasn't sure how much I was going to say tonight, but it sounded from at least two of the Board of Ed members that they were looking for our opinion. So I wanted to just be transparent with everybody and say that's, that's where I stand at this point. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Want to Counselor Laffman?
Thank you, Chairman Marone. Um, good evening. I appreciate all the work that, um, that everybody at the table has done and all the board members that are here and that are not here. Um, I watched the December meeting, I watched the meeting last night, both on YouTube. Um, I thank you for trying to trinate that down. Um, when I saw the first meeting was almost three hours long, I was scared. I'm glad that nobody else was scared though and we're trying as hard as we can to reach that three hour mark ourselves. Um, a lot of what come, came up in those meetings is, is kind of come up already, or again, I should say. Um, Counselor Reynolds, uh, worked out the, the twenty thirty-two date and I think that was thrown out at some point. Uh, the two forty-five, um, was an answer to your question in one of the meetings and the planetarium, figuring out what we're going to do with the buildings afterwards, um, how much is reimbursing for the pool versus the turf on the fields. Um, I understand that you, you are at the, the Ed spec core level as, uh, and, and sorry, I'm sorry, I forget your name. There was, uh, perfectly stated, uh, the core, the nucleus of, of this decision that will guide where can we actually put this building, which again, I, is up to the Board of Ed. And i, if we just forever say, uh, you know, we're against it and the Board of Ed's like, well, we're for it, this will never end, right? Um, so the concept that I, I know it keeps getting stated, I don't want to say much about this, uh, but we, we, we talk about the referendum and I don't know that it's been clearly explained or stated, the concept in a, in a public meeting or in a, in a regular council meeting because it's, it's just kind of been like chatted about. Um, so I'm gonna try and keep it as, as simple as possible with the concept, uh, and Counselor Tatter referenced it earlier. Um, we cannot just send a vote to the public as a town council. A petition has to be signed and a certain number reached. What that petition pertains to, um, are, are, the, the theory is, is that the council take a vote that would basically, everybody would agree is going to be the community's up or down vote on the one high school. And I know the Board of Ed is elected to make these decisions and I know the town council is elected to make the financial decisions, but the amount of discord going on in the community, it's very clear that this is a community decision. Um, the amount of money it would take to renovate the two schools to the new school level is, is a lot. And if, if the community wants to pay for that, then, then great, then we're going to have to decide that together. Um, at some point, I hope, or I think, you know, we'll come up with a way to adequately get this to a referendum, because I honestly think that's the only way we can, we can move forward. We need a clear, yes, this is going to happen or it's no. And if it, if it, if it passes, then that's it. We're building one school or if it fails, we're not, whatever the, the case may be. Um, I think we need to keep being respectful and understand that the conversations for the most part going on now at the board level and here are working from the one high school perspective. The debate of the two versus one is a different conversation. And, uh, traffic studies and environmental studies, all these different things, I understand. I, I've been doing Wallingford politics for over twenty years now. Um, when you're really against something, when, when there's a group really against something, they're there at every single turn. You can't build that there because there's a flower, I looked up and it might grow there. They don't care about the flower. And then the traffic study, we can't do that because there's going to be so many buses. They don't care about that either. It's not their neighborhood. So I think, I just think the, the referendum is, is the only way to once and for all solve it. Um, I don't know exactly how we do that yet. We'll talk about it. I hope that we can do it amicably. Um, but again, thank you for all the work that, that you've been doing. Um, the only side ask I have then, if, if you and the Board of Ed would entertain it, is we need a strong ballpark on a complete renovation of the two schools as a comparison because otherwise the referendum doesn't mean anything. Um, I'm just trying to keep everything moving forward and I know that might cost extra money piling onto our two forty-five K. Um, but we've already spent that much and I think we just need to move on. I mean, this is a school, we want a school situation, whether it's two renovated or one new, that's going to last us fifty years, right? I think it's a, it's a small price to pay to just get a, an answer that we can all stand behind. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Laffman. Um, you know, Mr. Reynolds made the point about sort of programmatic issues at the, at the, the two schools, when I, we certainly see a lot of examples of those, but there's no guarantee that at the one school, that the program is going to be any, you know, any, in any particular fashion. So I think for me, a lot of this comes down to what's the program going to be like at the new school, right? Because what, what's the advantage, you know, of moving, uh, to one massive school as opposed to the two schools that we have, right? And I agree with Craig a hundred percent that there's a certain political issue here because one Board of Ed voted on the project to do it. This is a separate Board of Ed now that has sort of gone along with it, but hasn't really taken a vote on it. And it's going to be a third Board of Ed that's going to have to ultimately vote, you know, to, to move this project forward if we're looking into twenty twenty-six. Similarly, it's a, you know, we'll have a different council. So there's a lot of factors here that are sort of out of our control based on sort of the, the political. And so my, my issue is there's ways to determine what the public wants without passing a vote, going to referendum, you know, spending the money on election. And then, and then if you get to that step, right? And you have, you know what's going to cost, you know, two hundred million dollars to the taxpayers or whatever, five percent tax increase, like by way of example. And then you get to the referendum and it fails, now you're, you haven't done anything with the existing schools, which all need work, right? And we're sort of like at ground one. So it's almost like I'd like to take up some of these other projects that we know are coming because we've all talked about the middle schools and sort of the, the situation that they're in. There's all, there's tons of work to go around, right? And if this is a seven-year project from start to finish, you could start on some other project immediately and have, you know, get something done while we continue to work on this project. I think unfortunately, the real, the political reality is the town of Wallingford, because we've been sort of deferred in our maintenance for so long, we're going to be in, in school construction projects, I think, for the, you know, for the foreseeable future, right? At some stage of school construction everywhere. So I think there's other ways to determine what the community wants, that you, you like a, a more comprehensive survey, you can do focus groups. I mean, there's ways to discern this information without going through this whole process to then get to the end and have a, a price tag that the public doesn't want to deal with. So I, I agree kind of with Christine and this kind of, uh, gets into the next option is like elected official to elected official. I feel like we need to have a discussion about like, is this really the road we're going down? You know, because this was January of twenty-three and I kind of expected us to be further. And this is not, this is certainly not a critique of the board or of the administration, right? This is perhaps my own naivete in not understanding all the, the facets of this project, but in two years later, I expected us to be further along than having this discussion about whether we think this is a good idea or not. You know, it's sort of this, in general, what would the school look like? Like the Ed specs are great because it's the next step, but it doesn't really give us any useful information, like a price tag or tell us what the program is going to be like. And there's still all these other things to work out, like swimming pool, planetarium, you know, those kinds of things. So I'm just concerned because we have a lot of work to do and we're not really even at the, at the start line of the, of the race yet. So I'd almost like to move on to something else and get something done that we can get done in the short term and keep this, you know, sort of on the back burner. Um, but so that's sort of where I am, you know, with this project for now. I'm not super supportive of the, I think there's a lot more you could do with two buildings than one, which I've said before, but I'm trying to maintain, you know, an open mind about what's the finished product going to look like and what's it going to cost and sort of, you know, all those things. I, I agree that we're elected to make these decisions and I think to sort of push this off on a referendum is sort of a cop-out in a certain way because, again, you're elected to make these decisions. So if I vote yes, then I'm going to defend my decision, you know, to the public. But if I vote no, then I'm going to defend my decision to the public that support the one high school. So I think the way that we sort of handled this is sort of a disservice to both those in favor and those against the one high school because this is, we're sort of like in this endless loop of, I mean, we're making like, you know, baby step progress here, right? And it's, um, again, not a critique of the board and not a critique of the administration. It's just, it's my sense that we're just, I want to see more happening, right? Like our kids are important and so I want to see more school construction. I want to see, you know, tackle more of these projects and not just get bogged down in this one project. So with that being said, uh, we'll go to the public. Any public comment on this item? Mr. Corso?
Joe Corso, three Juniper Street. Uh, so I, I'd like to say a few things. One, uh, my first is, uh, looking at the numbers, when you're looking at the numbers, you got to read that on the diagonal. So it's not sixty across, it's about twenty students that drop per year. That drop happens in ninth grade because we lose students that go back to their sending towns, they choose to go to Xavier, Mercy, Notre Dame, any of the private schools. So that chart's got to be read on the diagonal, not straight across because those years rotate. So ninth grade in twenty-six, twenty-seventh moves to tenth grade in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, if that's right. Um, my brain's not working perfectly right now, but I think that is correct. Uh, second, the total student population, it, it's definitely going to fluctuate. Um, we know that. I've been through a building project, I was there for the entire building project at Stratford High School, uh, prior to leaving to come to Lyman Hall, which is just when the construction began. Um, and it is painstaking. And when you get to that building committee level and things are constantly changing, but that's when you get input from both the council and the Board of Education, the townspeople, when you get to that point. As far as properties, Wallingford doesn't have a lot, uh, but I am, I am obviously in favor of one high school. I've spoken at almost every meeting we've had over the past seven years. Facebook thinks I have a hidden agenda, I don't. My kids are all going to be gone by then. This is really about, in my opinion, what's best for students and what we're doing right now is a huge disservice. So the, the next piece of what I'd like to do is invite every counselor up here to come to Lyman Hall with boots and work clothes so I can show you what's going to happen when you renovate those buildings because it won't be anything. Understand that the renovation of the buildings allows for about twenty-five percent of a new building, that would be our gym. We have the oldest gym in the state, we have the worst gym in the state, we have the smallest gym in the state and we have no aux gym. My daughter got hit with a piece of falling roof last year while she was in gym class. So when we renovate, we are going to strip all the furniture out, we're going to paint the walls and we're going to put new furniture into an existing poor struck, poorly structured building. That's the renovation. This is going to take three years. While this is happening, we're going to have forty portables in the parking lot so our students can learn in portables. So let's just wipe a whole nother generation out because for, for whatever reason, and it's, it's so beyond frustrating for me with the Little League fields in town, our buildings, we just don't like progress in Wallingford. And I'm not sure why. Right? We want to do a, a, a study and, and as far as the properties go, I have designed a school, I'm not an architect, and I have plopped it down on three properties that could handle, one of them double the size. So there are properties in Wallingford. We have to buy it, we have to, we have to go out there and we have to get it as a town and a community, but there are properties available. A simple Google Earth will show it. If, if we, if we don't want to do anything, then just make the decision right now so people can make the decision to leave Wallingford. My building's falling apart. I have ice skate rinks down my hallways that are not compliant with ADA because they were built back in the early nineteen sixties. When it gets hot outside and it's cold inside, I have to put fans running up and down my hallways because they get too slippery. If you think any, I have tunnels running underneath all of Lyman Hall. That's what I want you to come see. So I want you to come see the new, come to Lyman Hall, take a walk with myself and Mr. Akebo, my head custodian, so we can show you exactly what you want to renovate and what we're not going to get and how it will not benefit the kids and the absolute disruption to education that you'd be looking at for three to four years. That's these families that are here. And I know, I, like, we hear all this outrage, there's forty-four thousand people in town. Maybe eight hundred people are upset, maybe eight hundred people really love it, right? I'm not a huge fan of the referendum. I, I was, I would hope we would have made a decision, but if we have to go out to referendum, let's go, there's forty-four thousand people. What do we get, ten to fifteen thousand that come out for most votes? So let, let's, let's figure out what the town wants and just move forward and stop wasting time. It doesn't make any sense to me that we haven't moved on this at all, at all, no movement forward. The board has worked tirelessly, we have held ample sessions for people to participate with. Every couple of new years, there's some new counselors, new board members, new parents to the school system that act like we just, like this came out of nowhere. It didn't. You're talking to twenty-plus year educational professionals, members that have been on the board for that long, that are making a decision that are in the best interest of students. And people can disagree with that. Small high schools are great, then build two new high schools. Build two new ones, if that's what we want to do. That's going to cost you four hundred million dollars. I haven't seen the town spend anywhere near that, so I don't think that's going to happen, which is why feasibly and I think responsibly, one school is the way to go. With a hundred percent certainty, I can tell you, class sizes will not increase. That is a myth thrown out there by the, those that don't want one high school. Class sizes will not increase. They will have more options to take classes. Right now, if Sheehan's running an AP physics class and they have a section and we have an AP section of physics that allows for one, one class, we combine them, there's two, that means there's more flexibility in scheduling. So when a kid wants to take AP physics, he doesn't have to drop AP Spanish because they're both running one course only that same period because that's the time that they can run and get the most kids in them. So without a doubt, when we combine into one high school, you will be looking at more opportunities for students. That, that's not a question, that's not a possibility, it is a guarantee in one high school, students get more opportunities. And the loss of athletic time that we hear about is just not true. We have barely surviving athletic programs. Sheehan has, has a phenomenal football team the last few years. They have sixty students, plus or minus five, I could be off, sixty to seventy students on their football team. This is a state championship level football team, right? Sixty-five kids. We got programs in this state that have two hundred plus kids in it, seventy-five freshmen that come out for a football team. We don't have, we don't have three levels of sports. Combining high schools would allow us to have an appropriate freshman JV and varsity sport in every sport that we offer. That means your freshmen are coming in and getting prepared to play at the varsity level. Yes, they might lose an opportunity at varsity, but they don't learn teams, team, teamwork, sportsmanship, camaraderie, just on varsity sports. They learn that in Little League, they learn it in Weber basketball, they learn it in Vikings football, all other areas where we are combined. Right now, you've got Wallingford footballs combined, basketball, they're all together. Wallingford Little League just combined because the number of athletes we have combined between Wallingford and Yalesville has shrunken down to smaller than either league has ever had before. That's because our population is dropping. Right? I, I guess at this point, it's make a decision or don't, but the, the town should then get to know and then make a choice. Because this is, it's, it's embarrassing to me that we are seven years in and we keep having the same conversation a couple of times every year. And, and the invite is there. I, I, before anyone makes a decision on wanting to renovate these facilities, come, my new boilers are working. Come look at these beautiful new boilers in my boiler room that is falling apart and flooding all the time. And I mean, two to three feet of water that we just put one point two million dollars of boilers in. Please come take a look at this facility before you vote to renovate it. Wear boots, wear work clothes and come take a look. Then go to Sheehan because you're going to see the same thing. And then you can go to Dag and Moran and you're going to see the same thing. And then you can go to the elementary schools because the newest facility we have in this town is Sheehan that was built in, I think, seventy-three. That's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Craig, before we go to the next speaker, Mr. Corso, the only, um, so in terms of the,
Before we go to the next speaker, Mr. Corso, the only, so in terms of the timeline of this, so the council took this up in March of twenty-three, but we were asked for an opinion on it, and the council requested more information. This is the second conversation we've had about this topic, and this wasn't at the request of the board of ed, this was at the request of one of the councils.
Yeah, I understand that. We've just been going through, this is seven years now we've been talking about it, and we are no closer, and all we, and it's just, my hope was this meeting was going to move us forward, and I'm not, I'm not feeling, I don't, I'm not leaving here with that feeling.
Yeah, my point is that when you say the "we," we have been talking about this. We have not been talking about this as the council, the board, and the school administration may have been, but the council, this is our second bite at the apple.
Yeah, well, so maybe so, but you've all been a part of it. You've all been here, you've been in town, you've been on the Facebook pages, and you are the body that governs this town. So yeah, my expectations is probably a bit higher than that. So I mean, like I said, you know, my stake is not, there's no hidden agenda here. I deal with it every day, I deal with the facility that my alarms are going off, we're getting different issues that we have, we've clicked gas leaks last year, the maintenance department does an amazing job keeping these facilities running, right? But here we are, and we're leaving tonight with, it's not ready, there's no property, I think we should just do two schools, let's go to referendum, let's not go to referendum. We're not leaving here any further. There's no further, we didn't make any progress. Right? And look, the town is outraged. Look how full the auditorium is. There's fifteen people here, but the town is up in arms. I'm sure maybe next meeting, there might be a few more that I said that, but let's just have the vote then, so then no one has to make a decision. If no one wants to vote, or take that vote, or step out onto that plank, because I'm stepping out, so if you don't want to do it, then let's just go to referendum, see, figure it out, and then make decisions where we can maybe help some kids learn, because right now, we're seven, eight years out from that, before we make any progress. So I mean, that's where I'm coming from. It's frustrating to me. I was hoping, when we started this, that my children might be able to actually reap the benefits. They're going to be long gone, but let's make Wallingford a desired place. Education is why people move to a community. Don't listen to the rumors that aren't accurate. Come check out the buildings, and let's make a decision that actually benefits kids.
Thank you, sir. I will see you in the Lyman Hall catacombs.
Good evening. Mike Vado, 377 North Elm Street. I was told at home not to cause trouble tonight. I can't resist. Not trouble, just to talk. I thought tonight we were going to discuss the presentation again, that we had the other night at one of the board meetings, but again, we got back to two schools versus one school. I'm tired of it, I have to tell you. I mean, let's, if you watched the board meeting last night, Mrs. Taddy, you heard me say, let's just go to referendum and get this done with, but before we do, everybody needs to know the consequences of either decision. For instance, if you were to renovate one of the schools, you need swing space. Where are you going to put the kids? Okay? Is anybody thinking of that? You have to buy temporary classrooms, that's an additional cost, and I don't know if you can have even enough of them on the left, on the land that is left where the schools are now. I don't know if you'd have enough of them. I just throw some things down here. The state, the state kept getting in the way of our progress. I think I've been to the state four times already, there have been different people in charge of that department, and they have different attitudes and different, you know, different ways things should be done, and then we had to go back and start all over again. The waterfall plan, the maintenance, right, Mrs. Belizzi? We had to, that was something they just threw at us. Why? Why did they do that? We don't really know, but we had to do that, and that cost money. Voag, that is an issue. I don't want to see kids driving from, being driven from a brand-new school back to Voag, that's, they're going to lose educational time. But we're not totally sure when the original grant was given. I'm going to find out. I'm going to see if I can find out from the person who was in charge of that whole construction program. But if we don't, if we can't get an answer right away, I think the state, and we have to go check on this too, as long as you keep it as a municipal building, I don't think there's any fine or whatever, because you're using, you're not using it as Voag before that particular time that they give you before you can do something else, what is it, twenty years, something like that? It could be used as a municipal building, it's close to DAG, maybe DAG can use it for educational purposes, you won't be fined anything, I don't think, because you're going to still use it as a school building. I could be wrong about that, but that's just off the top of my head. The educational specs, those are very important, probably more important than anything we're talking about tonight. You know, I'm an educator, this is most important to me, that we have the proper amount of space for every program that we offer, and we offer a lot of programs in this town, we should be very proud. In fact, I think I just told the superintendent that, one of my kids is at, I forgot what college, and, oh, they interned, one kid is going for, become a physical education teacher. He's interning at Sheehan, because Sheehan is supposed, is, it was said to them, is the, I think, the most outstanding, has the most outstanding athletic program in the state. So, you know, we do a lot of great things, and these educational specs were developed by people who are in the schools all the time and know what is needed in the schools. And we on the board want to make sure that, like, things like the pool, do we need this pool? Because we do have one at Sheehan, things like that. So we have to look at these and approve them, and that's, I mentioned this last night at the meeting as well, you know, people are talking about these focus groups, if we don't have, if the board does not approve the specs first, you're going to have people come to the meeting and go to a focus group, and of course, the one versus two high schools you know is going to come up. But you're going to have people saying things, this was mentioned at the meeting last night, oh, I want this, oh, no, I want that, oh, I think this should be there, I think you shouldn't have that. It'll be total chaos, and who do you listen to? Who do you please? Okay, you wanted that, Mrs. Allison, all right, we're going to put that in. Oh, but Mr. Laughlin didn't, now he's going to go away mad. So I feel that the board should approve the educational specs. After all, we are the ones who are running the school system, we are taking the advice of the people who work in the school system, and we're coming up with educational specs. Let us approve them, and then you have something concrete, so that people can come then with these focus, we can go to these focus groups and have them say, oh, you know what, why do you have that in there? And we can give an answer. I just think that would be a little more valuable to do it that way. Just let me make sure I have everything here. System, Voag, state requirement, okay, I think I have it all. So I am done. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, Charity Kuitt from fifteen Leyden Avenue. I so appreciate all the really tedious and laborious work everybody has been doing to make this happen. I know it's a lot. I come to you with concerns as parents of really young children. I have a second grader, so she would be one of the first students in the doors of a new high school. I also have a three-year-old. So that being said, parents who are in my situation are really in over our heads, busy with practices after school and running to school drop-off and pickup and doctor's appointments and a million other things, and I consider myself fairly involved. I go to PTO meetings when I can, and I try to come and pay attention to things like this, and somehow, I've still missed a lot of the communications on the one high school proposal plan. And I think that is telling, because there are also families that really aren't involved and aren't as attentive to things like this. And I think it's important that we kind of put on our marketing caps and figure out how to reach our families of the younger children who are going to be more affected by this than the parents who have kids in high school. You know, things like flyers and QR codes and Facebook pages and things that are actually going to reach people who would be affected by this and interested in this. I think we're really missing out on opportunities to hear from families that this really affects, who do want to be involved, and they're just, they're not noticing, they're busy, they're missing out. So I think we need to try a little bit harder to get input from families. I know the survey went out in December, and there hasn't been a ton of feedback on it. I almost missed it, my friend let me know that I was out there. It was buried in Parents Square. Parents Square, where I'm getting notices all day from my teachers, from my principal, from the secretaries, there's a million things coming through there, and it was four paragraphs down before he even got to the link. So I think it's very valuable information, but I think it could be put out in a different way, more digestible to people that are actually interested and they want to be involved in it. And then my second thing, kind of still on the line of that transparency, is I don't think there is a lot of information as, like, an apples-to-apples kind of comparison as to what we're actually looking at. Like, when we look at these buildings being advertised and the specs, sure, it sounds beautiful, a brand-new building, sparkling clean, lots of facilities, sounds great, but how does it compare to what we actually have now between two schools? I don't have a high schooler, I haven't stepped foot in high schools, I have no idea what those facilities are like and what we have, what would be losing, what would we be adding on, what would be changed. I would love to see some more comparisons to better inform us about what the changes are and what we're really adding value to by making this change. I certainly have my own opinions and how I feel about converting to one school, but I'm open to all kinds of things, but I don't feel like I have enough information to really make an informed decision on how I feel about this issue. So I would just love to see a little bit more effort put into making more details go out to the families, so that we can be better informed and choose our support in one way or another.
Thank you very much.
Laura Lanna, fifty-two Clearview Drive. I'm going to go off the cuff a little bit. I did send an email to the board of ed and the town council earlier today. I think it's really hard, and we look at the room, and I know Mr. Corso pointed out how empty the room is. I was late, because I was coaching my kids' basketball team, I was hoping to leave by nine o'clock, so I could put them to bed. I think that parents have a lot going on, I think it's great that we stream these meetings online, so that we have the ability to watch them when it's free. So, and I think that the fact that we've been talking about this for seven years and have still made no progress is really telling to how the town does feel about this, and the challenges that are there. You know, my kids are in the middle years, they may or may not be affected based on timelines of this. I went to a town, I grew up in Enfield, and I went, we had two smaller schools. And I think that the challenge that we're hearing from folks is that a new town, you know, like, it was just, a new school, like, was just stated, great, shiny and new, let's do it, but I think we're really missing out on what we are hearing the town values, and that's connectivity to our teachers and other students, and opportunities. And I'm going to read part of what I sent, because I was told that I have to keep it to three minutes when I go to the board of ed. So we've talked about chances missed out in extracurricular activities, and I was concerned, I went back and did read and watched the board of ed meeting from twenty-twenty-three, where they did vote, and it was mentioned at that meeting that a hundred and twenty students would miss out on the opportunity to play a sport. And I'm quoting a study here from Mitchell's Two Thousand Observation, where a school of two thousand students, only the most talented will be recruited for the basketball team or the drama club. The result is that a small number of gifted students dominate the sports and activity rosters, while the vast majority are relegated to spectator status. In small schools, sports teams, musical groups, and clubs depend on broader participation. The number of extracurricular opportunities does increase with school size, but a twenty-fold increase in population produces only a five-fold increase in opportunities. That is, as a school expands, an increasingly smaller percentage of students are needed to fill the available slots. In short, more students produce less participation. Most students will not be required to participate, because there will be others who would. In a small school, every student will have the opportunity to hone and improve their talents and interests. Researchers point out that in small schools, everyone is needed to populate teams, offices, and clubs. Thus, even shy unless able-bodied students are encouraged to participate and made to feel that they belong. And I think that we can go back and forth, right, and say, a big school can offer this, two smaller schools can offer that, but I think that what I continue to hear in the community and what I've seen talked about is what we value as community members, and I think it's really hard, and I know it was mentioned earlier, we'd really like to see what a renovate-to-new option would look like in pricing, because we're shooting in the dark. I couldn't even find anything about what our reimbursement rate would be if we did do a renovate-to-new. It was kind of, this is the direction we're going on, this is what we're going to vote on, and there really wasn't a comparison of what are our options and where should we go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Ross first, and then you'll be next.
Ray Ross, six fifty-six Center Street. I've heard it a couple times tonight that we haven't even got a site. Well, first of all, we have possible sites, but if you want to go into executive session, we'll talk about it, but other than that, we're not talking about it, because the minute somebody finds out there are sites that we're looking at for a school, the price goes up double or triple. So to say we haven't been doing due diligence, we have been looking for sites, and we do have possibilities, but nothing that we can discuss in public. Thank you.
Hi, Leslie Williams, five ninety-five Woodhouse Avenue. Seven years ago, when this started, I went to a meeting in one of the theaters at one of the schools, and there was maybe twenty people. And I was physically, not physically, verbally attacked, because I suggested we should keep two schools. And I have since changed my mind, I think, and I don't believe for a minute, this town that can't even get the community pool back open, is going to spend the money for two, two state-of-the-art high schools. That includes turf fields, huge gymnasiums with auxiliary gyms, and state-of-the-art theaters, and robotic centers, and all this stuff that we need to have to make people want to come to Wallingford. I came to Wallingford because I wanted to live on the Lyman Hall side of town. I have three brothers and sisters that went to Lyman Hall, my nieces and nephews went to Lyman Hall, my two boys went to Lyman Hall. I am what I call a recovering sports mom. I sat on the sidelines at Lyman Hall football for seven years. The first-year skip, whose name I can't remember, was still the coach, and they would cancel a lot of the freshman games, and the people at Friends of Football were upset by that. Why are, my freshman parents are complaining. Well, six of those boys that were on the freshman team played freshman, JV, and varsity. Five of them were honor students. They did not have time for another game. I believe what Joe Corso says is true, that we do not have full teams, full range of teams, that we would have if we had one high school. My son played travel ball in Southington, I spent a day putting in all the freshman baseball games in my notebook, and they were like, well, how do you know he's going to get on? I'm like, everybody gets on, there aren't enough kids. And by sophomore year, starting varsity. Whether he was good enough to do that, I don't know, but both my kids still coach till this day at high school and college levels. See what else I wrote down here? Oh, yeah, I didn't mention coding. There was, many years ago, a survey that went out, I'm talking many years ago, and it was so bad. If you said no to something about having two high schools, the answer was, it made it sound like you were not, you were not, you didn't want your child to be prepared for the twenty-first century. And that's not at all how I felt. But if you didn't answer it the way they wanted it answered, you were not putting education first. And I sympathize with you not being able to find, find the surveys, and the rest of us who don't have kids in the school system anymore, don't have access to any of that information. I mean, we can go on the website, da-da-da-da-da, but we are, our opinion is not sought out from the board of ed, which, maybe that's the way it works, I don't know. But it seems like a lot of people really want their homes to be worth something, and if we're in a town where we can't have anything nice, where people are not going to buy our homes. I went to a meeting not too long ago, the mayor was there, Mary Muzinski was there, a few other political types was there, at the senior center that talked about building housing for seniors, so that our homes, not that I'm moving anytime soon, our homes could be sold to families. Now, is, are those kind of projects... Now, is, are those kind of projects being reflected to the Board of Ed as to we are looking to house seniors somewhere else so we could open up this huge stock of family homes? That particular thing doesn't make me feel like one hand knows what the other is doing. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels?
Jason Michael, Meadow Street. I'll try to keep it brief because at a Councilor Marone meeting, I think we're in the 15th inning, 9:25. But a bit of latitude, as I'm gonna come in to this from kind of an oblique angle. But it's a rhetorical question, doesn't need to be answered. But my question is, what are we doing with the armory building? And I ask that because a huge piece of this equation coming from a citizen, who, my children are out of school, and God willing, I don't have any more coming into school. I come from a pure citizen and listening to all this, and I've kept kind of my ear to the railroad tracks on the whole thing coming along. And, and a huge missing piece of this is, on the argument for one high school, whichever way you fall, we have 50 armory buildings that are gonna be empty between the two campuses. That's gotta be addressed in order to... So, the best analogy I can come up with is that you're a restaurant, I'm a patron. I come in, all I'm seeing right now are the specials. Couple of dinners, couple appetizers, couple of drinks, maybe five drinks. But I'm not seeing the menu. So how in the world can anybody make a rational decision without knowing the consequences of closing two high schools? I'm not saying I'm for it or against it. But if we want to start moving forward, the whole menu has to be put together, at least reasonably. If we're gonna spend a quarter of a billion dollars on a new campus, awesome. If that's the way you want to go, and, and if that's the right way to go, it leaves us with two huge buildings that are not in good shape. And I think the common thread amongst most of the speakers from the, from the audience tonight has been information. So if, if the groups, and I'm not, I'm not saying that they haven't done diligent work, and I can only imagine the hours put in to get to this point. If they're not gonna present, or you, or whomever makes the decision on the existing high schools, how in the world can anyone make an informed decision if a referendum is to come up? Or even a survey is going to come out? You want one or two, that's emotional. You want to keep it the way we have it, or just make, well, we don't have a Thanksgiving football? That's all emotional. None of it's rational. None of it's thinking forward financially, educationally. Right now, it's just everyone's shooting from the hip. We're talking about taking votes and, and let's move it forward. I think in order to go forward at all, the whole pie has to be provided, at least in some form. Are we gonna, are we gonna make Lyman Hall into private housing? 55 and over, convert the building, make it private, get the tax roll going? Can Sheen be a vocational high school that other towns pay us actual income to send their kids here? And then we have this giant gem of a one high school? That makes a difference in my decision-making. And I can't imagine it doesn't make a difference in everyone else's when we're juggling a quarter of a billion dollars and decades of paying it back. I just think that if we're gonna move forward, it's senseless to try and do it without filling in those holes. We'll never have the solution to the equation without all of the, all of the problem coming, coming towards it. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Back to the council. Mr. Fishbein?
You know, you say to a child, "Do you want the newest video game?" And they say, "Yes." And then you tell them, "Well, then you have to get As in all your classes." "Oh, I didn't know that was part of the deal." The vote by the Board of Education was premature, wholly premature. That is a decision that is in their hands. But without a site, how can you make that decision? If you just say to them, "Hey, do you want a brand-new high school? Or do you want to renovate the two?" But you never tell them where it's gonna be. That's all, that's a, that's a component, that's an important component. The Board of Education that made that vote, it was represented to them, Lyman Hall. It's the only site that was in that packet, is the picture on the top. I didn't watch all of their, their meetings, but, you know, for those of us that were here, we talked about, you know, did you do a transportation study? People were complaining about how long it would get over there. Nobody said there are other sites. Nobody. And now we're hearing, well, there may be this mystery site. Well, then vote. Pick the site and vote. And then come to us, as you did with adult education. We just moved adult education up to the Barnes Park, right? A need was identified, a site was decided by the Board of Education. It came to us for funding, and we voted on it. Would have been a referendable, it was a referendable item. But now we're going in circles. And all I'm here, I quote, that nothing is happening, but there's no decision before us. Nobody has come to us to make a decision. In fact, that night, for those of us that were here and remember, I believe it was Counselor Todd who made a motion, and I seconded to stop this process. That motion failed. But since that, nobody has come to us to act. Because a site hasn't been picked. And the Board of Education is going along and saying, yep, we didn't pick a site, but we're going along with this, and we still don't have a site, and we're spending money, and we still don't have a site. Pick a site. And I'm gonna tell you, if we're gonna spend $200 million on a brand-new high school, I don't understand why we're talking about pool or no pool. $200 million. You're buying the Cadillac. You're gonna put a pool in it. It only makes sense. In a planetarium, why even have the discussion? You're spending $200 million? On a site that you can't even identify. I want to do my job. I want to take the vote. Please, come to us. Make a decision, pick a site, and come to us for funding. And then Mr. Corso will be happy because things are advancing. To blame us because things aren't happening is just not fair. Everything is within the hands of the Board of Education. You know, I heard last time we ran municipally, there were members of the Board of Education, "Oh, no, it's in the council's hands." No, that is not the process. And the referendum thing? I understand that even if we take the action and whomever, I don't know if anybody's done the math, but you're gonna have to collect about 6,000 signatures, okay? I've been involved in referendums. It's a lot of work. The only way you're gonna be able to get 6,000 signatures is if you put it at Lyman Hall. Because the CN side's gonna be able to get 6,000 signatures. And at the end of the day, under our charter, you need a certain number of votes in order for that decision on the referendum to hold any legal value. There's a lot of hurdles to go over. I want to advance the ball. Make a decision, pick a site, and come to us for a vote. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Under Counselor Allison?
So I didn't really want to talk tonight because I've talked a lot about this subject in the past. I really didn't feel necessarily for maybe the same reasons, albeit probably not by his intent, for the reasons Counselor Fishbein just listed. I didn't really think that this was appropriate to have on the agenda when we can all very easily go to a Board of Ed meeting and make the same comments that people can make in our meetings. So, but it seems that maybe I'm the only one who didn't say anything. So, the Board of Ed didn't request this item to come before us. We requested it, so it's not a matter of the Board of Ed keeps coming to us and asking us for things, and then we don't have a decision to make. We did not, they did not ask us to make a decision here tonight because we asked them to be here to present to us. For all of the reasons that Counselor Reynolds listed, I am for one high school. I cannot imagine, I went to one high school, I think my student body was between 1,200 and 1,400. My graduating class was definitely somewhere around 450, but we had students from other towns. So, I didn't get lost in that school. I didn't fall behind. I had every opportunity to play sports where I wanted to. I am not particularly sporty. I also had the opportunity to do theater. These are struggles that students in our two high schools are currently up against, where they have to weigh the balance as to whether or not they want to take AP something, or they want to go to the Voag program, or they want to do CNA. I would love to be in an environment where those competing priorities don't exist. However, in one high school, they will still exist, but not so bad, right? So I am a person who wants to do everything. If you put it before me, I want to do it. I just joined the PNA. Okay, there is not a thing I don't want to do. So, when I say that it scares me that we will lose our arts and music programs if we do not combine the high schools because we have such declines in those areas, I really truly do mean it. We are trying, as a town of Wallingford, to figure out, you know, we have programs for the arts. We have the Wallingford Theater Company, we have, or the Wallingford Summer Theater, or something like that, theater company. I have two very famous players in the audience right now, at least two, three, actually, Rajan, you're here too. So, I would say that's, that's not gonna be enough. We need to be able to fill a stage. We need to be able to give students equal opportunities, equitable opportunities. I know that equal is Jason Zandry's least favorite word, so I will tout him while I'm up here. Equitable opportunities. I think that right now, the way that two schools are designed is students are really having to weigh what academics they want to continue. I can understand a student choosing to do CNA because that's a really great opportunity. Say I become a CNA in high school, and all through college, I have, like, guaranteed earning because the medical field needs people, and probably guaranteed continuing education because they need you to upgrade those skills so that you can, so that you can better support them. I want to be in a town that supports all of those things. I actually don't think it's a bad idea, after we figure this whole one, one school thing out, or two schools, whatever it ends up being. I don't think it's a bad idea to make Lyman Hall into a vocational school and charge other towns tuition. You know, but we can't make any of those decisions until there is a full amount of information in front of us regarding one school versus two schools, reimbursement rate and cost for one, estimated reimbursement rate, cost for the others, and where are the sites for the two schools versus where are the sites for the one school? Or where is the site for the one school? And none of that is anybody's fault who is sitting here before us because we didn't expect you to know, we shouldn't have. We were just in a meeting, I think last month, or maybe even November, I don't know, it all blends together at the holidays, in an executive session, discussing that very thing of the options that there could be in town. So, I'm not understanding why that's new news. But I do agree, again, with Counselor Fishbein, that we need full information. And in order to get that full information, we need to give the Board of Ed, the Superintendent of Schools, and our representation from Colliers and Snap? Slam? Slam! I knew it was a four-letter S-word, not the one I like. So, to, the opportunity to provide us with that information, provide the community with that information. One suggestion I could make regarding getting information out to families, I am a secretary of two organizations, and when I have very long communications in my, like, weekly or monthly updates, I provide, like, a list of things I'm gonna talk about at the very top so that people can kind of scroll to wherever they want to go. If, that way it's highlighted, in no uncertain terms. We're talking one school, like, we're, you know, whatever everybody wants to see. We're talking about, you know, high school, combination, whatever the word was, slash Colliers, slash Slam, you know, family talk. Like, make it very clear at the very top, and you can always write all that text anywhere down there. But at least families will have the opportunity, somewhere near the line of sight, to get that information, especially considering that this is one of the longest and most frustrating community talks for everybody involved, I think, because everybody is so passionate about it. It's not to say that it's wrong to be passionate, it's not to say that it's wrong to be on one side or not see the other side. It's simply where, it's simply where we are, and we just need to give people the information because as we have seen tonight with one of our speakers, minds can change. And with the proper amount of information and the proper amount of backup documentation, we would be remiss to go to referendum now because it would mean absolutely nothing. We would decide on one school versus two, and maybe the community does want two schools, but then the community finds out how much those two schools are gonna cost. And then we have to figure out, well, what school do we do first? And we have that conversation for another 14 years. So, I'm being sarcastic now, but I, I know you guys get the point. I can't resist, I'm a very sarcastic person, it's very hard for me to be nice up here. So, I really appreciate everybody's time. This actually is like a really early meeting, so I'm still super thankful that it's only 9:40. Thank you, Counselor, Chairman Marone, for always booking us, these are nice meetings. But thank you to everybody who shows up, and I do respect both sides of the argument. I don't think that there isn't something that can be learned by looking at both sides of the argument, whether it's one or two schools. And it's not to say that my mind can't change, but I know where I'm at right now. And I know that when I think of equity, I think of student education more than I think of, really, anything else. But also building maintenance, that's a really big topic. So, thank you guys very much, and have a great night.
Anyone else in the council? I'm sorry, Mr. Tester, I had you on the list.
Thank you. I do want to thank Counselor Allison because she started out with saying pretty much what I was, what I wanted to say. And that was to remind us all that the board didn't come here asking us for anything tonight. We, we asked them to be here, and they came here. I will be uncharacteristically brief. I, I, there's nothing to gain looking backwards. I think it's fair to say that the board, administration, whomever has taken enough of a beating over the last year or so, publicly and otherwise, for what was perceived to be a lack of public involvement or information. I don't know if that's even true, but it comes up all the time. Looking backwards is not gonna do us any good. We are where we are now, right now. But I'm very pleased, and I'm looking at one slide, and it's the timeline. You know, they keep it simple, stupid. Here, you want to know where we are? Here's where we are. And for the last year, close to a year, we've been hearing, we're waiting for the educational specs to be drawn up. Okay? However we got there, okay, we're done arguing about all that. We have some pretty involved, pretty detailed, pretty amazing educational specs. So here they are. We are talking, they are talking about a potential site. And it's right on the timeline, the little red lines right there, the beginning of 2025. Ed specs, budgeting, site selection, takes us about halfway through the year. In a very short period of time, the long bar that says "public outreach" is on the timeline. So anybody who has felt unheard or not quite adequately informed, look forward and see what happens. Pay attention. Okay? We are making progress. They are making progress. Okay? On the important stuff. Then we get to approve the ed specs the last quarter of the year. So we've got 2025 to do what everybody's been asking for. Give me something to look at, a, a real thing. This is what the school will look like. This is where the school will be. This, these are the ramifications of this school and this is what it's going to cost. As that's going on, of course, the, the information on what it might be like, what it might, what it might take to renovate the schools is also going to be available. We get to 2026, we get to today, next year, and budget approval by Town Council, or not. But that's when they're going to be asking us to make a decision. And I, I want to stress that because I often remind my colleagues of what our role is and what the role of the Board of Education is. And it's very easy to, to, to mix that up sometimes. It's not our job to design a school. It's not our job to decide what's best for the kids. Of course, we care. Of course, we represent the public, but that's not our job. It's their job. And we start sticking our hands in like we, we're, like we try to periodically, where we start getting into the, into the nitty gritty. What, what about this? What about that? What about this? Backup, that's not your place as a town counselor. When they come to us with a project and a dollar figure and a big proposal, which we will be involved in, we'll have, I know we'll have conversations, then we will make a vote. And by that time, the public will have also had a year of digesting the real stuff, not the esoteric stuff that has been thrown around for the last couple of years, few years. And then at that point, if we approve it, clearly the public can object. And if they want to, bring it to a referendum. But there's a timeline right here. So let's stop, stop saying nothing's going on, nothing's happening. It is happening. I appreciate you being here tonight. And I'm going to hold on sharing any views I might have on this as someone who works in a school. But I want to assure, no, no, I'm going to say it anyway. I want to assure people that when we talk about prograbbing and, and the the lack of opportunity that sometimes comes up for, for, for kids based on the numbers and what we're trying to do. Remember, we're not, you're not in high school anymore. I'm 65. I, when I was in high school, I had wood shop and metal shop and I played some sports. Okay? But I have a colleague of mine who's ripping his hair out because he's having a hard time finding enough kids to enroll in his class, the classes that he teaches. The guy teaches drones, robots, engineering. And he's having a hard time getting enough kids that he can enroll in that class. Drones, okay? I'm just saying, that's just one thing. This is, so keep in mind that what we're talking about, we're beyond a 21st century school. All of the things that are possible, but logistically are not probable when we have, we don't have enough kids with access to it. And I'll leave it at that. But thank you for being here and I just would, I would, I would urge patience because now I see some progress and let's stop beating the board up, but hold their feet to the fire. Get some good information out. Let's work together and see if we can't make some progress on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Laffin?
Yeah, I just wanted to correct if we, the referendum number, that would be 3,000, not 6,000. 10% of the registered voters in Wallingford at the time of the last municipal election.
Thank you for the correction. Seeing no other questions from the council, we'll move on to number nine. Oh, I'm sorry. I heard, thought someone was interrupting me. We'll move on to number nine, discussion regarding a potential Board of Education and Town Council combined group to discuss the One High School. So, so where this came from, Board Chair Roscoe had reached out to me to discuss the, the potential of putting together sort of a working group between the, the board and the council to discuss these items. It wouldn't be limited to a, a certain number of counselors or, or Board of Ed members, but it would be sort of the groups at large. It was a, a format to meet. She had requested a facilitated meeting. Her thought was to have the meetings facilitated by CAEB. I'm not so hot on the idea of having the, no offense to the board, but it's sort of the board's lobbying group. So to have them run the meetings is, is, wouldn't work for me, but just to present, you know, her argument as she presented it. But I do think the idea of, you know, we, we've talked about information and the flow of information and there's a lot of questions here that I think could be potentially worked out in this group. I mean, obviously the meetings have to get noticed like any other, any other meeting and so on. So my motion is that we combine, have a combined group with the Board of Education to meet on this topic, the topic of the, the One High School.
What would, I'm sorry, what, I'm, I'm happy to second it for discussion if you want. So a second.
Yep, so that's second, if you want to, I'm sorry.
I just, if it's just for a comment, I would just wonder, what is this person or what, what is this group going to be charged with doing? Would they be charged with bringing information back to the council? Would they just be interested parties? I'm not, I guess I'm not sure what this could accomplish outside of having yet another group to ask questions only to bring the board and the superintendent back again.
Yeah, I mean, it's a fair question. So I think the idea is in a less formal manner than at a town council meeting, the ability to ask questions or have a free flow of information about this topic. So sort of see where the, you know, where individual council members are, individual board members are, ask questions, sort of develop a, a strategy of where to move forward. You know, I mean, my feeling, obviously I have feelings about the project, but I mean, in this seat, I want to see anything move forward, right? I want to get to a resolution. So I see this as a way to sort of move this down the road, whether we decide to go with the, you know, whether we want to fund it or whatever, or move this project forward or not. We still need to move the, move the ball to get to a point where we can make a decision.
I would offer that we should, we might want to like defer that charge until we have a more reasonable amount of information from, on the project itself or on the varying projects that could be proposed. So I, like, I would, I, I'm sure that everybody else has opinions, we always do, but but like I, I, I do think it's a little preliminary, although respectfully, I would totally do it if it goes forward, so.
Yeah, and that's a fair comment. And to be frank, you know, I didn't have the time. When I spoke to her a couple of weeks ago, I didn't have the timeline that we have tonight. So it may be, we may decide it's preliminary, right? So, so the first question is, are you interested? And the second question is, you know, if it's a facilitated meeting, who's going to facilitate or do we need a facilitator? So I'll go on to Counselor Fishbein.
So and I've heard a, a bunch of ways, right? It's not our job, right? I mean, they're supposed to decide what is best for education and then come to us. You know, as with large projects, what we usually do as a government is we create some sort of a, a body once the site is picked and you know what you're doing on the site, right? So like we did that with the police station, created a group. We redid the roofs at the schools, we created a group. So I would have no problem with creating a group, you know, once it's decided where and what and, and it, all of that. But, you know, me going and meeting with members of the Board of Education to sit there and say, have you picked a site? Is not going to be advancing the ball and it's, it's their purview to come before us. I don't see the benefit at this time. I mean, I think that the timeline itself is is probably going to get adjusted, so I, I think this is totally premature. I did watch the meeting. I think I'm aligned with Mr. Vado on, on my opinion of this group, so I, I just don't see it being necessary. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. Anyone else? How's it, Tad?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I guess, I guess I don't really understand. I don't know if the like board leadership wants to explain the concept. I'm kind of confused because I, I heard last night and then I think I maybe heard again tonight that the decision is made, right? I heard that twice last night during the meeting, the decision for One High School is made. And then now we have an agenda item where it's, there's going to be a committee for the One High School. So I, I guess I'm confused. I mean, if, if the decision is made and then our next step is not to opine on the One High School, our next step is to choose if we're going to fund it or not, but now there's an item that says that they want to hear and they want us to have a committee about the One High School. So is the committee just to convince us that that's a good idea? Because if that's the case, then I'm not interested in it. I think we've already, we already know where they stand and they said last night, that's where they are. So what, what's the point of a committee, I guess? I just don't understand what, I don't know if the board, if the Board of Ed wants to explain. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding the concept.
Well, so the concept is, and I'll, I'll defer to Vice Chair Doring if you'd like to speak. But my, the concept is, I understand it is, so the council has called for collaboration on this item multiple times, right? We feel like this needs to be a collaborative, this is a community project, this isn't a, like the Board of Ed could be the educational experts, but at the end of the day, this is, this is our decision whether we're going to fund this project or not, right? So they can't build a building, they physically can't build a building, right? They can't acquire property, like those are sort of the limitations of their job. So they can decide that they want the One High School, but they have no means to put that into practice without, you know, without the Town Council. And as Counselor Fishbein mentions, you have to have a, they can't build a building without a public building committee, which is going to be selective members of the public, right? So this group is mainly to, sort of a free flow of information, to attempt at collaboration between the two groups, to provide a, a, a means to talk about these kinds of items. So there's a lot of like, I won't say barbs going back and forth, but you know, you watch, if you watch the, the meetings, you hear a lot of sort of comments about, you know, whose job is whose and all that. And so it's, you know, if the idea is that we need to collaborate to either go with this project or not, this is sort of the, the attempt to move in that direction.
Okay, so in that case though, would, would public question and answer be allowed at these meetings?
I mean, if you ask for me to opine, it would be up to the group, but I, first of all, this group can't do anything on it. They can't, you know, pass a, they can't do anything in particular, right? We could do it at a council meeting, they could do it at a board meeting, but it can't do anything special, one. Number two, I would not participate in a group that didn't allow public comment.
Okay, because I think that's, that's an important aspect of it if, if it were to go forward.
But again, and that's, no, that's my.
Sure, absolutely.
That's my opinion.
Yep, and I, you know, one of, one of the things too, I think, I'm always careful, I, I think, I never see disagreement as a bad thing. I think, you know, there's a lot of different opinions. I mean, between the two, you know, between the council and the Board of Ed, there's, there's 18 of us and there's going to be different opinions and I think that's a good thing. I think, you know, talking about the different ideas and I never see it as, you know, barbs or as people taking shots at each other. I think it's just, we have a lot of, a lot of ideas and I think it's a good thing to discuss. But I, again, I still just stand a little bit confused as to what the purpose of this is besides, you know, I listen to them at their meetings, I certainly, you know, try to watch as many of their meetings as I can. I know they listen to our meetings. I'm just not really sure what the point of that is outside of an agenda item, once they have an actionable item. So I guess I'm just confused as to where, what the purpose is as opposed to another committee and more meetings.
Fair enough. Anyone else? Mr. Ross?
I, I kind of agree with the sentiments that if we were going to do something like this, it seems a little early. I'd also be remiss, and if my dad's watching, although he's probably sleeping, but my dad was on the Board of Education for, if most of you aren't aware, or very should be aware. And we use the word opine tonight a few times. He would opine often about the number of meetings and the commitment. And the first thing I want to do outside of that is just thank the Board of Education for all that you do. You are unpaid, truly unpaid. You have to run every two years to get elected, but you don't get a dime for doing it. And so to get beat up and have to come to meetings that aren't yours is, you know, you're to be, to, to be commended. And in, in light of my dad's, sort of, and he lives across the driveway from me, in light of hearing what my dad would say about subcommittees and subcommittees, I, I would hate to put Board of Education people in another meeting where they have to come and explain things to us that they've already explained in other meetings. That being said though, I think that it creates an opportunity for us to try to create a regular communication between us. You know, like if we, if we talk about a quarterly update or something like that where, or, or maybe we come to your meetings sometimes and you come to ours. I mean, like I'm all in favor of collaboration, but the thing that I do want to recognize is A, all of our time, B, all of your time, and C, all of their time because, well, there's some former Board of Ed members up here. It's a lot, right? It's a lot and it's, and I'm not saying it's not important. I'm just saying that to get into another meeting, to regurgitate things that you've already talked about in three meetings is sometimes not productive. And so to me, it's a great idea, it's a great concept. I don't know if I feel like right now is the right time, given the timeline that Mr. Tester referred to in his comments in the last item. So that's sort of how I feel about that. Can I ask one question about the last item? Real quick, is that okay? Yeah, yeah, sure. The population projections are based on us having the VOAG program in the high schools, correct? So if there were no VOAG program, how many less students does that equate to? Do we know? Okay, all right, thank you. That was something I, no, 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 100, 150. So the, the projections of the 1570, you can drop that by 150 if there's no VOAG program.
Anyone else? Mr. Laffin?
I would do it, I think it's too early. Maybe the Board of Ed really wants to like chat about it again or wait until we're at a later point, but otherwise I, I want a motion, we table it until the Board of Ed comes back with.
Yeah, I mean, I think based on, if I may, it may be based on all the comments. I think I've heard either the word no or premature from pretty much everyone. So I think I'll, I'll just withdraw the motion at this point and I have a good relationship with Board Chair Roscoe, so I will reach out to her and we can discuss some other format, you know, to get this done. But I mean, them reaching out to collaborate, I think is, is a good step anyway and so we'll just continue to attempt to collaborate. All right, seeing nothing else on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.